I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be held Tuesday, September 22nd, in the Board of Education Meeting Room. Thank you, everyone. We will go right to public comment this evening. Morning, God, we're here in the morning. Do we have any hands raised for public comment?
At this time, would you like me to go through the instructions? Please, if you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raised hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen where your face, name, and/or number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comments. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment. Edward Washeka, you are unmuted and recognized.
Thanks, I'm gonna address football again. I realize other parents may have more educational oriented issues. Okay, as you all may be aware, the CAC made its decision yesterday to cancel the 2021, 2020, 2021 football season. CAC said that because it canceled the season, individual schools, if the school boards and the local departments of health are supportive, could opt to play football as a club sport, similar to the way some other sports like ice hockey or girls' ice hockey are played. We understand that CAC is holding a call today with the athletic directors during which they're going to discuss more about these options that may be available. What I'm asking is that, and I don't know the process for the board to formally consider things on its agenda, but we don't have a lot of time left before it will be too late for the kids to play this season. So depending on what we get today, we might be looking, or parents might be looking for the board to consider some alternative at its next meeting on Tuesday. And so what we're asking is the administration and the board to support whatever might be sensible for Darien that people can put forward. Thank you.
Teresa Vogt, you are unmuted and recognized.
My name is Teresa Vogt. I'm at 22 Circle Road, and my son is a junior at the high school. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank our administration and our teachers, who I do consider a successful opening. No plan put forward was ever going to be perfect. We need to recognize that and have patience in this new environment. While we all know what is best for our own child, it is the administration and our teachers who we trust to do what is best for all 4,500 learners in our schools. We need to also recognize that when coming up with a reopening plan, it was with the understanding that any decision would impact not only our students, but also our community at large. So while the metrics may say a full reopening was warranted, I would argue that a soft opening was the smarter and safer decision for the community. The education of our children is not confined to the classroom. Let's set an example by conducting these meetings with a more respectful tone. Board members aggressively interrogating the administration or criticizing our parent organizations helps no one and only hurts our students. Thank you.
John Dunn, you are unmuted and recognized.
Good morning, my name is Jonathan Dunn. I live at 175 Raymond. My oldest is a kindergartner at Tokonik. I grew up in town and all of my K-12 education was in the Darien Public Schools. We were always so proud of our schools, knowing that we were one of the best in the country. Faculty, administrators, and the BOE all worked to do what was best for the students. As I've watched my daughter begin kindergarten this year under the hybrid plan, I'm astounded at how far we've fallen. What has happened? Is this really the best Darien can do? I read the op-ed by Jocelyn Delancy this morning in the Darien Times. It is disheartening to see the head of the Darien Education Association so adamantly opposed to actually educating our children in the most effective way possible. She gives no timeline when students could return to school full-time, and by her own standards, it would most likely be months, if not years, before students would be able to return to school five days per week. In her op-ed, she ominously warns that teachers will leave Darien if we move forward with the reopen. If she feels unsafe, I would strongly encourage her to live by her own words and find a new job in another town. Today, the only continent in the circus is the failed leadership of Superintendent Adley. Simply said, he has demonstrated he cannot be trusted to do the right thing for our students. Over the summer, we were told by him that if the town met specific metrics, schools would reopen fully for in-person learning. This was a falsehood. Despite clearly meeting those standards, Superintendent Adley moved the goalposts in a last-minute decision choosing subjective criteria over objective ones. It is difficult to have faith in a senior town official to make the undeniably right choices when his decisions appear based more on whim and personal convictions than science. A month later, we get to have a cohesive, fact-based explanation from the superintendent on his August switcheroo. Given the superintendent's past performance, I am less than confident the schools will actually move forward with the transition to a full in-person learning at the end of the month. I pray that he will choose the objective over the subjective, prove us concerned parents wrong, and make the right decision. Amidst all this, we must also ask why the elected members of the Board of Education abdicated their role in developing, implementing, and monitoring the district reopening policies? Why has the Board of Ed chosen to hide behind the virtual format when a venue like the DHS Stadium with large open spaces for social distancing and a PA system could allow for actual public engagement? Is this the best our elected officials can do? There are a few shining stars amidst this darkness that should be highlighted. Tokonik Principal Mary Michelson is one. Her communication and responsiveness has been absolutely stellar. Given the severe limitations of the hybrid system, my daughter's kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Lansdell, has done a noteworthy job in welcoming her new kindergarteners. Darien students missed enough school during the last academic year, delaying the full return to school by a month, at the very least.
John, you are approaching time.
Has only put our children further behind. We must change course, follow the superintendent's own past dated guidelines, and move to a full in-person reopening on the 29th without hesitation. I, along with many other frustrated parents in town, know Darien can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Is there another speaker, please?
Julie Best, you are unmuted and recognized.
Good morning, I am Julie Best, 38, Red Rose Circle. I'm a CDSP co-chair. CDSP has received a lot of feedback and questions from parents over the last two weeks. We're hearing from people who believe the kids should be learning in person, five days a week. We're hearing from parents who feel most comfortable with the hybrid reopening, and we're hearing from parents of children who are presently full-time remote, just to name a few. But at the heart of it, almost every one of them is saying the same thing. They all want their children to get the best education and have the best experience they possibly can as we navigate this very difficult situation. We think it's important to stay focused on that for a moment, where we all agree. Today's agenda looks very responsive to the comments that were made last week, and we look forward to the discussion. Additionally, there are a few other topics we'd like to see addressed. How the district's remote learning plan measures up to the standards laid out by the state, specifically in Addendum 12, which was issued last week. Ideas and plans for improving communication between district and parents and school and home. Would you consider scheduling virtual town hall meetings to allow for more Q&amp;A opportunities, perhaps at the building level and/or by topic? And a clear understanding of what to expect when a student or staff member tests positive for COVID. People are still uncertain about what will happen in the Darien schools, especially as we learn of school closures in our area following the discover, excuse me, discovery of only one positive case. This morning would have been our first CDSP meeting of the school year, which has been rescheduled to Tuesday to accommodate this meeting. We've asked each PTO to collect feedback from their school communities to share with us in advance of next week's meeting. We hope this constructive feedback will help inform planning and troubleshooting should we end up returning to hybrid or moving to full remote learning at some point this year. We look forward to sharing that information with you in the near future. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning, and thank you, as always, for your tireless work on behalf of our children.
Thank you, Mrs. Best. Our next speaker.
Stacy Ty, you are unmuted and recognized.
Good morning, my name is Stacy T.A. I live at 10 Clocks Lane. The board has already received my public comment in writing, so I won't read it, but I want to highlight a couple things. My comment, my comment is to help the board have a constructive and collaborative conversation. My message is about communication and managing parents' expectations. But I hope you also noticed that my feedback showed how different parents want different things. I think it's important to highlight that this is not a one-size-fits-all scenario. I also hope you notice that I mentioned some positive qualities our kids are learning from remote learning. Those qualities are skills that will help children become successful, independent adults. Finally, I have to say, in my household, we have been very happy with how things are going. And I'm so impressed with my children's teachers and staff. The workload has been just right. The adult support required is age-appropriate, and it gets better every day. My kids are happy and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ty. Our next speaker.
Carolina Magui, you are unmuted and recognized. I'm gonna move to the next one.
I also muted myself because I wasn't unmuted. Hi, my name is Carolina Magui, and I'm in 28 Penn Set. I'm speaking today with much sadness in my heart after having read last night's letter from Jocelyn and the DEA. When our teachers have to write this letter because they feel hung out to dry, we have a big problem. Everyone, not just the administration and the Board of Education members, must read it undigested. What I know from this is that there is no perfect solution to this mess that is living during a pandemic, which we are, that will make everyone happy. There is none. I know there is a contingent of parents and taxpayers that don't have kids in the school that are very loud and critical of everything being done. As an example, the fact that almost 48 hours after school started, and it was half a day of class and a full one day of person and remote combo. 208 parents signed a letter respectfully requesting for in-person class for K-2 children as soon as possible shows me that we have no patience nor the willingness to give the administration and our teachers a chance to succeed. Yes, hybrid is not the best solution for our youngest students. We all know that, but we are living during a pandemic, like it or not. And the social contract of living in a society together establishes that we do have rules of behavior that we need to follow for the benefit of all, all of us. And if our experts, which we hired, decided that the best option to have a successful reopening was to start hybrid, then so be it. Let's all work together and not against each other. Let's support and not tear down. Let's build on what we have and make it better. Let's work on reopening the schools as safely as possible so our kids and teacher can have a successful school year. Let's follow the rule, let's wear masks, let's social distance, let's make the sacrifices we are being called to make. Let's show some grace, empathy, acceptance, and patience, to name a few. We are so much better than this. I want to apologize and to thank each and every teacher, administrator, janitor, bus driver, cook, SRO, employee, et cetera, for willing to take a risk that might be bigger than they ever thought they would in order to deliver instruction to our children, who they are not really related to. They do this because they love doing this, because they care. So I also hope that the tone of the conversation today is a respectful and supportive one, where we do show that we are our best selves. And as my friend Oprah says, who's not really my friend, the miracle for all of us is that we do get to keep moving forward. We are resilient, we are adapting, because that is what we humans do. Let's really adapt in a constructive way. Thank you for your time and service. I'm forever grateful for you.
Thank you, Mrs. Magui. Our next speaker, please.
Alicia Melberg, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, my name is Alicia Melberg. I live at 24 Christie Hill Road. I have two daughters, ages six and four. My husband and I have recently had meetings with several members of the homeschool team and have nothing but positive feedback to extend. We appreciate the work of those in our school. However, this isn't enough. I'm speaking today on behalf of my six-year-old and parents who are hesitant to question the board and administration's recent decisions, activities, and communications. I also speak as a parent who is concerned with our child's education and mental well-being. We have heard multiple times from the educators that our young K-2 kids benefit from in-person learning, that now is the time to shape their educational habits. My husband and I watched firsthand our child's struggle in remote learning this past spring. We had days filled with anxiety and tears after Google meets. We watched our child socially withdraw. Our hearts broke. In May, our child can no longer be in a separate room from us. This summer, we watched the same child flourish at the YMCA, proving to us that kids need to be around kids. Has the board and administration considered the mental impacts of our young? How can they support a hybrid model for these young learners? How are these kids not in school five days a week, especially with Darien's current COVID cases? How are the social and mental impacts of the reopening plan being considered? My story illustrates that our child's mental and social abilities regressed this spring. I'm afraid if we continue at this rate, this will occur again. We no longer have summer camps to promote our daughter's social growth. It's time for our schools to provide this. We fully support a five-day school week for our children, especially our youngest learners. In August, we saw parents vocalize their concerns, and we quietly supported them. I speculate there are numerous others who have done the same. This isn't good enough for our kids. Our kids need a voice. Like many, I worry that my child has lost weeks of bonding with their peers and teachers, weeks of building a solid start to her first grade year. This added to the months she lost last year. How can this be validated? My tone is not out of hostility, it's out of concern and wanting to better the education of Darien's children. We have heard multiple times that the board and administration are operating under unprecedented times. It is also unprecedented times for parents and children. It is these times that make it even more important to reach out and listen to the parents and understand their concerns and feedback. My husband and I would personally invite any board member to hear our feedback on the remote platform and our past experience this spring. Our door is open to any that want to work directly with our six-year-old on her remote days. She's in cohort A. We are fortunate to live in a community that cares about their children's education, a community that wants our youth to succeed. Moving forward, I would ask the board and administration to improve communication and encourage our community to provide feedback. It's time to hear stories like ours of parents who work for their child's mental well-being. It's time for the children to have a voice. Thank you.
Melberg, you've approached time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mary Jo Miller, you are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you, my name is Mary Jo Miller, and I live at 52 Relan Road. I'll try to be brief, but first and most importantly, I'd like to thank the teachers of Darien, the administration and staff for their hard work in facilitating the current hybrid model, managing in-person students with remote learners and full-time remote learners. I've had many veteran teachers tell me that this has been the hardest thing they've ever done in their careers. And I also would like to thank the Board of Ed for your tireless work. I'm a mom of a kindergartner and a special education student in DLC at Henley, and I'm grateful that our neediest kids are back in school four days a week. It was absolutely essential that those children in particular, they were experiencing major setbacks that may take years to recoup. And as you heard a lot last week, virtual learning has been very difficult for my kindergartner. We have yet to successfully join a Zoom meeting, and I can't seem to navigate her assignments, although I'm admittedly not very tech-savvy. She's competitive and just interested when I'm working with her. I'm obviously in favor of a full return on the 29th. I think the numbers support a return at this point, but after a lot of consideration, I do understand the district's slow and steady approach this September. It's given everyone an opportunity to practice and adjust to this challenging time, most importantly, staff. And I also understand that regardless of current COVID cases, there are those that are concerned, if not full up terrified, of a full return and what the effects of that may look like. I think it's important to get our kids back full-time, especially for K-2, since every educator will tell you that virtual learning is inappropriate for this population. They need a play-based, hands-on, interactive education. I hope we continue to look at this population separately and specifically as future events unfold. For today, I hope this meeting will help me and other attendees understand our reopening plan, the safety measures in place as the entire population returns to schools, and how COVID cases in the schools will be handled. While I know this has all been discussed and laid out previously, it would be helpful to hear the details again so that our community feels assured that everything possible is being done to educate our kids in the best and safest way possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Our next speaker.
Yaseem Sukrani, you are unmuted and recognized.
Good morning, my name is Yaseem Sukrani. I live on 76 Middle 6th Road. I have a fifth grader and a kindergartner at homeschool. First of all, I would like to thank all the teachers and the staff for the work they've been doing. The expectations from them have increased almost threefold, and they are trying their best to meet to those expectations, and I can see how hard they are working. I see emails coming from them in the middle of the night at 10:00 PM. That means they gave up their family time to do the work for our children, so I would like to thank to all of them. I have, I would like to place two questions to the Board of Education members. The first one is that, given the current circumstances, that there is always possibility, we assume that the hybrid may continue. So currently, there are no live streaming classes in the elementary school levels. I would like to, we would like to know whether there will be technology placed in the elementary schools to potentially do live streaming classes. I know how my kindergartner is struggling currently. I would like to, I agree with Mary Jo Miller's comments. It is extremely hard for a kindergartner to continue with the remote learning. And my second question would be that if the situation has, if the numbers, COVID numbers, change in the future, and there is still worries about going to full in-school mode, is it possible to consider to allow only K-2 classes to return to school in full? Because they are the ones really struggling. I need to constantly chase my kindergartner around the house to pick her up and put her in front of the, in front of her Chrome, which has proved to be a very, very difficult task. I respect what kindergarten, what kindergarten teachers are doing, and I personally would like to thank them separately. Go shake their hands if I could, for the difficult job they are doing. These are my only two concerns and questions I would like to place. I hope that can be, that can be considered by Board of Education members. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Sukrani. Do we have any other speakers this morning?
We do. Nancy Cos, you are unmuted and recognized.
Good morning, Board. My name is Nancy Kishel, and I'm a sixth mansfield place. I'm the mom of a first grader and a third grader at Royal. Thanks for calling this very much needed special meeting this morning. Appreciate your time. My comments are really directed towards elementary school students. From what I'm hearing, just my word, middle school, high school students are doing fairly well. I'm very involved in parent groups here. And from, as you already know, elementary school students are not receiving the education they're entitled to under law. And so I'm not going to go through the failures. Right now, I'm trying to get my daughter on Zoom. I also work full-time in New York City. So this, the idea that a parent is able to stay home with a child, more than one child, and teach their children is just not sustainable, and it's not happening. So what we know is that elementary school students are not receiving the hours of education required by the state. And what we need to do is implement a system, whether it be an improved, remote, hybrid learning system, which I personally am against because this school age cannot navigate computers on their own, or have them go back full-time. My understanding is, and everyone's understanding and reliance is that September 29th, these kids will be going back in full-time. I implore the board, the board's job is not to just rubber stamp Dr. Adley's great intentions and hard work and his policy. The board's responsibilities are also to cooperate, analyze, investigate, look at the law itself to determine what it needs to do to make sure these kids have 177 days of school learning, 900 hours a year, and that's COVID learning requirements. And what I would like to see happen is preparedness for September 29th, and make sure that these kids, I mean, there's, parents are so scared that Dr. Adley's gonna send an email saying, whoops, we're not gonna go full-time on the 29th. It's gonna be remote after all. Kids are relying on this. Parents are relying on full remote. Teachers absolutely need to be respected. The teachers at Royal are amazing, they're my heroes. This is not indictment on teachers. This is an indictment on remote learning for elementary school students, and I ask the board to look at what the requirements are for these kids. We know that these kids are not getting the required learning. We know that, we've heard that, this is the evidence before you. So I ask that we make sure, at the very least, these kids go in on the 29th and were prepared to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kishel. Do we have any other speakers this morning?
We have one more. Jacqueline, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Tyler. I live at 17 Brookside Drive. I have a fourth grader at Henley and a freshman and a junior at the high school. I just wanted to express my concern. I understand that this was a special meeting that was called, but the fact that it was called at 8:30 in the morning on a day that many are trying to get their kids to school, as well as the fact that many of us have two working parents in a home, such as myself. I've sat here now until 9:04. I am now late for work on my one and only day out of the week that all three of my children are in school on the same day. It has been a very large challenge in our household to navigate the three children being on different schedules, as well as remote learning. I understand everybody is attempting to do their best, I appreciate that. But at the same time, as others have said, we are all trying to do our best. There's many times that I'm on a Zoom meeting with my clients or with government officials, and I'm having to pause and stop and help my children, specifically the fourth grader, either navigate their technology or stop and explain to them how to do multiplication or division. I'm a parent, I did not sign up to be a teacher. I did sign up to be a parent. But at the times that we're in, the unprecedented times, it is a very frustrating matter to try to play parent, architect, and teacher. I understand that many of the teachers are at home doing the same thing, and I'm just asking the board to look at the statistics and the science and the cries of help from all of the parents in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tyler. Do we have any other speakers?
We do. Greg Gramblin, Gramblin, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, Greg Grambling from 11 Blueberry Lane. We appreciate your continued efforts in the school reopening for Darien. Notwithstanding minor changes made this week to remote learning, we continue to believe our children are not receiving an adequate education under the current hybrid model. In addition to open access to YouTube and inappropriate pictures popping up on children's screens to their parents' horror, our children have received less than two hours per day of e-learning three days a week since September 8th. This is insufficient to meet the educational requirements outlined by the state. On Tuesday, on behalf of 125 families representing over 225 parents and students across all schools in Darien, I submitted a letter to the board reiterating the view of the vast majority of parents in our community who want every parent to have the choice to send their kids back five days a week in person. If a parent wants to keep their at-risk child at home, they should be able to. In the July parent survey received from our FOIA request, over 2,000 out of 2,400 parents responded that they liked their kids back in school five days a week. The response receiving the lowest number was hybrid, representing just 55 parents, or 2%. Over half of the 1,500 schools in Connecticut have returned to in-person, full-in-person education. This includes Norwalk and Ucannon on Monday. There have been, there's been concern raised over space in classrooms. If lack of space has been the administration's rationale for not returning, it calls into question the plan communicated to parents that students would be returning on September 29th. If space is the issue, why hasn't this been communicated? And has the administration looked into other alternatives? For example, Pear Tree Point School is sitting empty. Town Hall used to be a school, and the Darien Library has tons of space. All seem like viable solutions. There's a narrative coming from the teachers' union that parents in support of educating their kids with recommendations of state health experts is somehow anti-teacher. This couldn't be further from the truth. No one is complaining about the effort that teachers are putting in, and no one wants to force teachers at-risk to return. Everyone is frustrated with the hybrid plan that was put in place but never properly developed, which, under which neither the teachers nor children can succeed. This hybrid plan was put in place last minute without approval from or notice to the Board of Ed. The plan was forced upon the community when the state experts recommended a full-in-person plan based on scientific data and expert advice, and without following the recommendations laid out and recommended by the state Board of Ed. For future decisions and planning related to reopening, we would like to see the Board of Ed be more involved and call for board members to make a motion, to initiate a vote, to have school to have school in person full time as soon as possible and not later than September 29th. And to require that any change to that plan of education require Board of Ed approval. Absent a vote, we will continue to view the Board of Ed members as being against returning our children to school to receive the education promised to us.
Mr. Grambling, you are approaching time. I guess he's done. Uh, any other speakers this, this morning?
Jamie Zionik, you are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you. I'm Jamie Zionik, 15 Holmes Court, co-chair of Darien CPAC. I'm reading directly from Addendum Six, Adapt, Advance, and Achieve. School districts are required to provide faith to students with disabilities as set forth in the student's IEP consistent with public health requirements. Moreover, every school district must ensure that special education and related services are provided to students on the first day of school regardless of the mode of instruction, with a strong emphasis on providing in-person instruction. Um, I'd like to ask what, when was behind the decision not to provide those services beginning on the first day of school? Uh, my uh implementation plans showing where my services would be provided were not received until September 10th. Um, and I've heard similar from other parents. Um, so we'd like to know what percentage of students um are currently receiving their IEP mandated services? And um if, what percentage are in-person instead of remote? Um, additionally, I have a question on the 900 hours. Um, is a benefit in delivering these services in person if we are actually in person in school? And reading from the amended uh resolution from the Connecticut State Board of Education, it seems that the waiver of 900 hours is only for unavoidable emergency and not supposed to be a proactive measure. So if the Board could um provide some more information on that, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like we have some more raised hands.
Mary Connell Lifton, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, thank you very much. Um, I, I just wanted to add a very short statement. I think um the other speakers have covered the, the concerns that we have. Um, the Lifton family at 180 Middlesex, two children at Royal. Um, I think the concerns um that have been clearly articulated about what's required under law, the concern about the mental health of our children has been articulated by the American Academy of Pediatrics, the concern about the, the mental health um of our children that these, this remote learning situation provides. Um, and I think the main thing that I want to emphasize is that at the elementary level that this remote learning is just not working. Um, that it, and, and to the extent that numbers would go up and we would find ourselves in the, in the middle of the winter where truly the science is behind us, need to be remote. I think that there needs to be a, a serious, serious look at the technology. Um, and, and at a minimum, the, the, the live teaching, which I understand is going on at the, at the, at the high school. Um, because this elementary, um, these, these slides and 1,000 passwords and, and, and websites, it is just not working. And so the people who have talked about tears and anxiety, I just want to reiterate that is happening certainly in our house and I'm sure it's not the only one. This is not working. Um, we are strong advocates of being in person five days a week to the extent that the metrics that were laid out by the district, by the state are being met. We see no reason that our children should not be in school five days a week. And, and certainly the administration preparing for the eventuality that those, those metrics would fall off and we'd have to be remote to do a better job of providing live teaching. Um, certainly at the elementary level because right now it is a failure.
Thank you, Mrs. Lif. I'm, okay, thank you. We will move on um to the status report on the reopening of schools. Dr. Adley.
Uh, hello, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Ms. Karen Cummings.
Hi, yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I don't have the hand raising functionality on my, on my Zoom. May, may I, may I quickly uh make a public comment?
Yes, Mrs. Cummings, please.
Thank you. Uh, hi, Karen Cummings. Um, I have uh two kids in Middlesex Middle School. Um, first, I just want to thank the administration, the teachers, everybody involved, the parents. This has been a Herculean task and effort, I know. And uh it's true that no one size fits all. Um, I'm certainly hearing loud and clear that the elementary school parents are, are indeed struggling. Um, I um desperately want my kids in school because I also am extremely worried based on our experience this spring about their, their mental health. Um, however, I think there needs to be a lot more transparency about the protocols that will be happening if the schools do open full-time five days a week. The initial uh document that went out, and I read the whole thing, really didn't distinguish clearly in my view uh what's going to change from the hybrid model to the five-day in-school model. Um, I believe desks will be three feet apart and instead of six feet apart. But it's really unclear to me um what's happening in the lunchrooms, what's happening on the buses. Uh, will the desk actually be three feet apart if you have 25 students in a classroom? Um, I've been dropping my kids off and picking them up and there's a lot of kids gathering in, you know, in front of the school uh with very little social distancing. So I think, I think the district needs to do, uh be much more communicative and clear about how these protocols are going to be changed based on doubling the population of kids in the school. I think there need to be more, you know, inclusive Zoom meetings next week. And I think an updated uh document should be distributed to everybody explaining the full-time protocols and how those are changing. Uh, thank you very much, appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mrs. Cummings. Do we have any other hands raised before we move on?
Not at this time.
Okay, so we are moving on from public comments. We will go to status reopening of.
I'm sorry, there is a Ms. Juliet Drew, it seems.
Yes, hi.
Difficult.
I, I can't.
Ms. Drew.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Drew. Um, I, are you there?
Yes, we're here.
Great, I live at 14 DuBois Street. I have a kindergartner and second grader at Henley. First, I just wanted to say uh bravo to the teachers and the administration to their efforts. We all want what is best for our kids. Um, thank you Board of Ed, Dr. Adley, for hearing us and working so hard. With that being said, I do want to say that virtual learning has been very hard, um, if not near impossible for my kindergartner, our whole family, our whole community. It's caused anxiety, tears, a lack of confidence, frustration, stress and tension in the home, and most sadly, a real disinterest in learning. As experts and studies are saying repeatedly, these lost years can have long-lasting negative effects into the college years. We're asking, please, to return our children to school five days a week. Let's follow the science. If less than 5% positivity rate, as the CDC recommends for in-person schooling, please return our children to school. We support and ask for a five-day school week for K through two at a minimum. And if numbers rise and we need to return to hybrid or full-time, I ask you to please find a way to get our young learners live teaching. Thank you very much for your time, Board of Ed. Thank you, Dr. Adley.
Thank you. I'm going to give it 30 seconds to see if we're missing any hands and then we're going to move on so we can get to um some of the business we need to address today. Are there any last speakers? Seeing none, we will now move on and public comment is closed. Um, Dr. Adley, a status report on the reopening of schools.
Yes, uh, good morning, everyone, and thank you for attending. And to those members of the community who are online, uh, thank you for participating today. It is much appreciated and your voices are certainly heard. This morning, um, I did not request all my principals to be here. I requested just one from the elementary school. They're running buildings as you might expect. Um, so if you would just understand that. Also, I did not request the middle school or high school principal to be here. In fact, I told him you've got work to do. We do have uh in response to the Board's requests, agenda-wise, uh, Mr. Tranberg will be answering some of the questions about the curriculum along with our two uh directors, Corey Gillette and Linda Johnson at the elementary school. So they're online, so thank them also uh for their preparations and participation uh this morning. So what I thought I would do, um, is just walk you through really just high level. Um, and we can get into the weeds, so to speak, if we need to. Um, but I, I sort of just want to look at, we just, we've been in school 10 days. Um, I certainly respect everybody's opinion on what model we should be in. That includes the boards, that includes every parent, and we're all going to have different opinions on that. Uh, we, and I think we would recognize that and respect that. Um, so we currently are in this hybrid model. We have been in the hybrid model uh for 10 days. Uh, we would recognize particularly at the uh early childhood level, uh, some of the difficulties that we have had along the way. But I just want to reiterate because some, I, I think it's been asked before, right? And it seems to keep coming up, why did you do this or otherwise, right? So at one point I said at this meeting, and I was asked by a distinguished gentleman, what's your position? And I responded, what my personal position was, right? That doesn't mean to say that that's the decision that ultimately I make on behalf of the, of, of the district per se, right? Um, but that being said, yes, that was my, I, I certainly take ownership for that and I, and actually I don't apologize for it. I was asked a question, I give an honest answer back. Um, these are some of the things that in the first uh 10 days, and I know that could have been confusing, but these are some of the things in the first 10 days uh that we found along the way in the hybrid, uh, some of the reasons for doing it. It was a reasonable period, just to reiterate, and I think the Board knows this, right? I communicated in writing around these things to the Board of Education. And we did call a, a special meeting to specifically talk about this, but a reasonable time period for staff and students to transition to the new environments and really to the, the new expectations and protocols. Um, and any given year, there's a lot of time spent right up front on protocols, procedures, transitions. We'll even more of them, nah. Um, and in many ways, it's not surprising, some of the, uh, well, what you could say, apparent, apparent, I don't want to say parent, apparent, um, understanding or misunderstanding from a parent of how long that actually takes uh when you're in a classroom. But that's what we've got to editorialize in. Yes, COVID metrics at the time uh had to be considered and they were considered. And I was very upfront about the response, uh, the actual metrics themselves were conducive to a full-time return. I absolutely agree with that. But there are other uh factors in addition to that that I had to take into consideration, yes. Physical spacing, cohorting, compliance, uh, with, with self-screening opportunities that, that need to be, to take place. HVAC, cleaning and disinfectant. I need to make sure basically everything was ready uh for the school. Uh, I don't think that's an indictment on, well, you weren't ready. Um, I'm just giving you that there's, it's more, more beyond the um uh, just the physical, or sorry, just the, the actual metrics of the COVID uh seven-day average. It also gives the staff an opportunity to gain confidence in the plan and you can hear from the staff that not all of them are confident in the plan and there's anxiety that uh continues around that. It gives us a, a potential opportunity just to, to be dipstick to see like what was going to happen with a smaller population. Was there going to be any, any uh growth or in the actual COVID cases or otherwise? And again, it, it was, it's supported by the State Department of Education uh and our medical advisors. And I have to lean on some of that also and take that into consideration. So that's just a wee background as to some of the reasons why ultimately, ultimately I did what I think was best for this population, our, our, our community, our children, our staff, everybody. Uh, and I firmly believe that that uh was a reasonable way to get into it. And I think we've learned lessons from that. I would agree that no one's agreeing that the remote learning permanently is good for anybody, at least of all our younger kids. I'm, I'm not going to say that that's the case, um, but there are parameters that, that we have to, to deal with. So first, here are just some general observations from the first couple of days. First of all, there's, you've had absolutely extraordinary efforts of, of teachers and, and, and staff. That's up and down the system. Thank you to the parents. In fact, all parents, I, I do think that all parents, regardless of which side of the fence you're on or which position you think we need to take, I think all parents actually recognize that, I do. Um, and maybe it doesn't always come across that way. But ultimately, uh, I, I, I do believe that that's the case. The students also have been absolutely amazing. They have transitioned, I would say, very quickly. I apologize, but just let me just put this out there. Um, very, they've transitioned very quickly uh to the new transition. But honestly, a lot of times, if we have a change in schedule, something happens during the year, kids go with the flow, generally speaking. Um, but when you think that wearing a mask all day long, uh, with mask breaks and so on and so forth, that can be challenging. Um, but they've just done an amazing job and considering that by definition, high school kids and middle school kids want to gather together, uh, I still think it's a remarkable effort of, of what they've been doing. It has allowed us to continue to acquire additional uh supplies and, and materials that have come in. It's not as if, did we order them, yeah, we did order them, but, but when they say they're going to be here and then they continue to push back the deadlines and so on and so forth, so it, it has helped to improve that. We have revised protocols along the way. Um, some of our health and safety protocols and just general protocols. And that includes continuing to communicate those uh to the staff as they sort of have questions and then have other questions thereafter. It does prepare us in the event of total remote learning. Like, this is a fluid system. We could all be out tomorrow for some reason. And this opportunity has actually allowed us sort of to test the water a little bit uh for our readiness, what some of the experiences that we're hearing from our parents, ourselves, what we're learning. So it gives us an opportunity actually, uh, while that wasn't the, the reason necessarily, but this is one of the benefits that, that we're looking at. Uh, we are looking at, I think we would really desire to have more physical distance uh during lunch. That is, that, that is true, we would like to do that. It was desirable to do that. It will not mean that, just at the end of the day, it will not mean that we don't reopen. Um, but I do think we, we should, and we're actively in the process of looking at alternatives uh to the spacing and revisiting some of our perhaps original uh decisions about the use of big spaces, so on and so forth. So that, that is something that we just have to recognize and we do, and our staff is actively working on that uh right now. Um, modifications to arrival procedures. Okay, here's another thing. You have the whole school come back on the first day, which we could have done. Uh, it'd just be interesting, I've just sort of, it would have been interesting the first day to actually just manage that alone. Uh, if you, if you line up at the Middlesex, the parents are, who are dropping off and stuff, you can, you would notice that, maybe even Ox Ridge or even the high school to some degree. So we're working with the police department, but we're also working internally with trying to modify some processes to uh sort of alleviate a little bit. Um, I don't know it's going to be perfect, it's not going to be perfect, um, but we continue to, to work on that. And I'm just telling you, there's understandable anxiety. You hear it um in the staff, you hear it in some parents. I will say that the um, some of these processes and the communications that have gone back and forward, the teachers in this environment, let's, like, we quickly after 10 days think it's a normal environment. It is not a normal environment. The teachers, we are asking them to take enormous, I say risk, not necessarily health risk, right? But, but innovative risk to do stuff, make mistakes. And the, the climate and the discussion around this undermines all of that. I'm just telling you, as a culture, nowhere in here does it talk about culture. You talk about any organization in the world and it'll talk about culture, right? And the, the State Department of Education doesn't talk about culture or otherwise. But the very risks that we want them to take and make mistakes, the message they get, whether it's right or wrong, there's nothing we can do is right. Uh, we're going to make the mistakes, we're going to get hammered for, for the mistakes. And that's just, I just find that very, very unfortunate. Um, that doesn't mean to say the Board can't do governance issues or otherwise. But I'm just, if you don't think that that's what's happening right now, I'm just telling you, it is what's happening right now. And it's contributing to a lot of, uh, just a lot of anxiety and actually getting the work done. So I just want to, uh, I just want to be frank with you in that capacity. Uh, the reopening of school metrics, we, we monitor this every week, they, they're published every week. Uh, we have our latest from the, from uh Darien is uh for the 22,000 that we have uh population. Uh, we have one uh, one new COVID case uh as recorded in, in the last seven days. I mean, that means that, that we would have to increase, increase the current rate by about 15%, right? Uh, by 15, sorry, by 15 times. Or go up to 14 cases a week in order to go into the hybrid and the fully remote would be about 36, 38. So clearly, they, the, the metrics suggest that uh you, you could go back into a school mode. The metrics also are, are done by, by county and you, and they also reflect the same. So I just want to just share a couple of wee things in terms of um, just some things we've learned again in the perspective of since the last time we talked about the reopening, the whole 10 days of schools. And we have 2,255 remote learners. That was the first attendance that we submitted to the State Department of Education. I think that's actually down now to 240 something, so there's more children actually are returning to school. We created automatic Zoom links, login. We created automatic Zoom links login for five students. I think we've had a smoother start for the younger students the past two weeks. But I also would say to the parents, they have been very instrumental in making that happen too. And we've heard some of this morning about the systems that they need along the way. But I want to commend our technology staff for getting those processes up and running. We did deploy more than 2,000 Chromebooks, provided support for staff in each school the last two weeks. So since the last time we're here, we the department has been redeployed, reused. That has been very helpful and I think much appreciated by our staff members. Cameras have been installed, new filtering systems. We did hear an example of there was one incident that I was aware of of an image. And we addressed well, in response to that, we had we addressed the filtering system. We've increased our bandwidth. There's been ongoing the last two weeks of training and software platform for our staff members. And we've had to to initiate new attendance policies. The State Department of Education, I mean, new directions we got, we just referenced number 12, they were given out after school started. The whole like the whole plan of what a plan should be, how many minutes you should have, these are the things you should have in it. School already started, right? So we continue to get directions and guidance that we have to sort of adapt to and modify. So that's that's what we're doing. Food service, I think, has been well received, both by children and I I think by parents and chart wells. Didn't exactly have the best environment to have to kick off their experience, but they've done a super job, and that's one of the reasons that we have them. The number of students seem to be increasing who are taking lunch and and just by walking through the schools and asking students, it's interesting that they seem it seems to be well received to what they what they have. Again, under food, I would say that I'm just reiterating this, that we'd like to expand the physical distance at lunch and try and be creative with possible about that. Staffing, just as a review, we basically had the 10 teachers who did not return either through retirement, one years of leave of absence, so on and so forth. We have those covered. We approximately about three new vacancies and some of the coverage there is in the works. For the start of the year, and I it's like teacher absence, why are you putting that up? I'm just saying that teachers being in school has really helped us because the substitutes in this situation is A, very hard to acquire. And B, if you're doing remote learning or or something different, it's very hard for that to be an experience that replicates a teacher. It's not going to do that. So again, I appreciate the work of our staff. Health and safety, we have been following up with families who are absent due to illness or travel. So there's been a lot of communication. Thank you to the parents because the communication back from our parents has been really helpful in terms of being proactive about telling us what's going on. We do have a number of students who are quarantined. And that's not through anyone at the school. There are no students or staff members who have been COVID, who are currently COVID positive. So that's that's a good thing. That doesn't mean to say I couldn't change it tomorrow. And again, we're appreciative of the public health director, medical advisor. We did walk around the schools yesterday with our director of of health. He made a few observations. One of them was change the color of the perhaps, these are just recommendations or observations and not requirements, perhaps change the color of the the arrows that we have in the he talked about look, making a portal, but we have a portal. So that portal is up and running and that's the central site for all our materials. He talked about the possibility of for for future lunches. So we recognize that and also talked about, can we just revisit some of the protocols on the buses, the way we get the kids on or off the buses type thing. So those were taken and they also had the the consultant who works with our public health department for emergency management, he came along too. Michael joined me along with the principals and Alicia. So those were productive, so it allowed our director to see firsthand kind of what we're doing, what the classrooms like, what launches are like, what procedures are like. And so anyway, we appreciate his time coming around with us. There's since last week, right, or since the opening again, things continue to arrive here again. Some stuff we bought new and some stuff has just continues to come in. So sanitizing wipes, masks, plastic glass, all of that has been deployed. Hand sanitizer stations are right have arrived. That even changed yesterday from one notice I got to the next notice I got, and so that's good. Microfiber rags are expected next week. That's with the staff do have rags, but these are microfiber rags that I think will be better for them. Labels for sanitized spray bottles, that was requested and just to make sure that the labels go on every bottle of sanitizer that we have outlining what it is. The portable washing stations, hand washing stations, the additional ones will be in September 21st. Again, I'm giving you information as they have promises, so but that's what the latest news. The HVAC system report from ABS has been submitted. We are compliant with the State Department of Education and C D C D H, Department of Public Health requirements. And we're in the process of hiring additional custodial staff. Transportation, more students are now sort of jumping on board. The buses are light to some degree, but we're approximately at that 80% of a typical ridership at this point. There is control boarding and exiting processes and we'll revisit those. They are being disinfected after each run. Right now, the bus company and our software, we're trying to recombine the bus routes because we took them apart because of so even if you wanted to like open tomorrow, we'll we're good because we need to we need to make sure these systems are all in place. And we have some of the delays that I talk about with drop off, particularly a drop off pickoff to some degree, but really a drop off is a main area. I want to thank the police department too, because they've been very instrumental, supportive of trying to provide us assistance at all the schools at any time. And it's a wee bit of a change in platform for them too, as the times of pickup and any given year with buses, it settles down, right? This even more so is important to get a sense of when it settles down. Special education, I think that some of the some of the parents summarize some of it. A lot of our programs for most needy students and support services are now four days a week. I will say the overall thing for ELP elementary students and secondary students who receive support services is that they are into the system and that is working well. I won't read all that for you. You can sort of you can sort of see it. But the co-teaching classes, the plans are up and running. Remote services begin on Friday for ELPs. But basically, students with specialized programs have been in for the four days a week and that's been very well received. The curriculum, I know that the board asked for just a separate discussion on that, so I didn't elaborate on this at the moment. Christopher, Corey and Linda will will talk to that, but I'd just say this. There are no substantial changes that I don't know what the board the board, the phrasing of adjustments. Certainly a timing is something, but there's no substantial changes to pray. I put it together as pre decay 12 curriculum. There is more content and more things to do that has influence and you will hear that. And I will say there was a big SEL focus. I told the staff, look, right out the door, you need to reconnect personally, make relationships, make the kids feel comfortable. That has that takes time too. And I think the parents are also seeing firsthand how long it takes to do some transitions and and processes and protocols and establishments right up front. But that's that's the big message of the curriculum. I'll let Christopher, Corey and Linda get into the more specifics. This is the big picture of the COVID-related expenses. We will be sharing this information and be discussed at the finance subcommittee, which is on Monday. So we have a board meeting today. We have policy tomorrow. We have finance subcommittee Monday and we have a board meeting on Tuesday, right? I say that a little bit because just to get some of these other things done is interest at this point. But that being said, this is a summary right now. I don't have the the detail. I know what the detail is. We can speak to it, but it will be discussed fully at the finance subcommittee. There are two grants, the ESA grant and the coronavirus relief fund. And you can see that we're close to 500,000 in relief in grants that offset our expenditures to date. I think this will continue to change to some degree. We have had discussions with the Board of Finance Chair about this and where this currently stands. And it's to reopening. So okay, so where are we then, Alan, in terms of next week or otherwise? Well, these are the things that big things that I have to sort of consider. Are we ready for 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 these systems to be in place? And in response to the actual metrics? So again, a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks that we've had 10 days so far has been helpful in addressing some of these as we've moved through. I have been upfront. I there are rumors that bind. I don't know where the where the rumors come from, right? I'd be certainly happy if someone wants to show me something that I that I said differently or in some public forum. I have been consistent with this board since making the decision, which was on the 29th, we're going back. And that has been the plan and discussion the whole way along, right? Since we made since I made that decision and recommendation. So the plan is to go back on the 29th. We it still won't be perfect. It just won't be, right? And we'll still have to do some things for staff. And we'll still we'll still be responsive, but the situation is completely fluid. Now, if you were to say to me, like, what would what would what would stop this from happening? Well, if we had a population in school that all of a sudden I find next week is COVID-related and stuff, then they they all can't come back, right? If we get different directions from the State Department of Public Health, if we get different directions from the Connecticut State Department of Education. But at the moment, we're planning to go back. I would say that my recommendation would be that we have a meeting on Tuesday. After that meeting, I communicate to the parents there. I can continue to communicate to the parents, but certainly that meeting would be probably the sort of final process along the way of really making that decision and really making that notification should I say to to the parents, right? In terms of we are definitely coming back, but I have been consistent with that. Again, not everybody agrees with that, whether you're a board member, whether you are a parent, whether you are a staff member. And I respect everybody's positions that they may take. So with that, I'm either happy to answer questions here.
Thank you for your presentation. Are there any board questions? I would throw it out first to the board members who requested this meeting. Mrs. McCammon?
I have a comment and a and a question. Alan, firstly, I wanted to thank you. This level of formality is much easier for me as a board member to follow. I appreciate seeing what you have to say. It's hard. I just think, Chris, maybe one day we can talk about it, but I don't hear all the words that are said. So it's much easier for me to see it organized up here and to follow. So thank you for that, first of all. Although probably there are a lot of people in this room who could deconstruct that for me. Secondly, I wanted to talk just a moment about your important point about culture and and teaching. And, you know, I do, my heart is broken that that teachers are feeling as if they are not appreciated because I think, as you said very accurately, really and truly, I think every parent who is up there advocating, no matter what they're advocating for, does care deeply for the parent, for the teacher population, as do all the board members up here and as as do you all. I mean, certainly they've been taken into account in how we've thought about giving them prep time on Fridays and the three days that are put in at the beginning of the school year. And I know there's more conversation to come and I respect that. But then I take it upon myself to say, what is my role in in helping support the overall cultural discussion? Where can I self-reflect? Where have we come to? I think when people speak stridently, they're often feeling stressed and or unheard. So thank you for taking this meeting today so that we could hear more, so that we could talk and maybe answer some of the questions that are out there. Thank you for the level of clarity and formality in what's being presented. And I would ask that, you know, as a as a board and as administration, if we could, if we could think about our role in understanding that this is a culture that asks a lot of questions, that cares deeply. And that if we can come together around that, I think you know, there's a lot to be learned during this time. We have some lessons earned for sure, some things we have to do better and maybe some things we have to look at. But I hope that we can respect the fact that all these strident speakers want to be heard. And so thank you for being here today.
Mr. Seeny?
I echo Jill's comments on the presentation. I think this was extremely helpful and well done. So I look forward to the curriculum discussion as well. You know, I think I went spent the weekend reviewing the materials that you had all provided. And what I don't think is understood by the public is is the myriad of contradictions, the gray areas. And I don't think they even understand that the State Department of Education allowed you for a phase in period. Or a ramp up period, I think they called it. So and I don't think that was communicated well from the beginning. And it's our fault for not bringing that out, but it really helped me understand in the tour, as I said to you, helped me understand why we had a ramp up period. Now, in the meantime, we run into some issues in the K through five and specifically K through two. We're going to hear about how they've been addressed and you did a good job of talking about that. But I I think where we have fallen short as a board is our involvement, our formal involvement. We can each voice an opinion and give you a sense, but this board has never undertook a formal vote to support you and support your decisions, support your staff. And I think it's in, you know, part of the policy discussion later, which I would I would encourage amongst our board members is how much involved and same goes for the implementation strategy. The board involvement rules and regulations as outlined by the state and the Department of Education are ambiguous. Our policies contradict what the state is saying. So I think, you know, as representatives of this community, I think we're doing a pretty good job. And again, thank you. I realize you guys have better things to do than sit in board meetings and committee meetings. And I deeply respect that time. But at this juncture, I thought it was the right move to call for a special meeting and I'm hoping that we're accomplishing what we do so we don't have to do this too often. But I think as a board, we can become your, if you will, your wingmen and women in this endeavor going forward. And I think you mentioned that, if I heard you correctly, you know, we're going to be involved the night before the back to school decision. And I applaud that. I think, you know, that was lost and I'm not looking back. I'm looking forward here. That was lost in the first decision. I think that will help build confidence, not only amongst ourselves as board members. It will give you more confidence as educators and administrators. But finally, it will give our community a lot of confidence because we have to answer to our community. So I just, again, I want to thank you for doing this and I really look forward to the curriculum. I think there's going to be some tough questions. I guess my one question after that diatribe would be, you know, one of the unknowns is as COVID, you know, is still lingering. You know, we've heard news stories about cases arriving in certain schools and certain school districts. You know, what it and you don't have to answer this today, but can we put in place a distinct process and protocol on how we're going to react to individual cases and use our health expert opinions on that? So maybe you want to answer a little of that and look forward. I think that's one of the big questions we're starting to hear from the community. I mean, we're already looking forward to going back and we're not quite there yet, but now we're looking beyond that. So thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. And if I could say just sort of respectfully back just a wee bit. A, the COVID, what to do in a COVID situation, how the school is going to respond is all delineated in the updated plan. Everything that we would try to do a one-stop shop in scenario, that's where you find it. And we've continued to update that. And so specific questions around what do you do with a staff member, what do you do with a student? That's all delineated in the actual plan. John, I would agree that I've always agreed the responsibility of the board is governors. But there are times where just if a superintendent has to make a decision and that's delegated to him or her. That's a that's you're not, I wouldn't say you're not doing due diligence. In fact, we call a special meeting around that. There are a lot of time. The timeframe for a lot of this, these processes were, I think we would all recognize, fast-moving. In fact, they changed. And in fact, we didn't even know about some of them. I will also say, Mr. Seeny, just respectfully, it doesn't always sound like we're on the same page though, or that the process here is to be helpful to us, right? So I just need to under that's just my honest opinion back in some cases. So I would applaud that the 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 intent. And when that gets picked up wrong by these people sitting around, I don't curve it myself, okay? But when that gets picked up around here by my administration and my staff, that that becomes then problematic. And I don't think the board gave up its governance rights and I don't think you violated any. and I don't think you validated anything, nor did I believe that the superintendent valued anything. I would recognize always, there's a fine line between just communication about it and being on the same page. I'll always respect that and honor that, but appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Board comments or questions? Mr. Marone.
Yes, so again, I echo my colleagues' comments so far.
Dennis, could you speak right in? It's just that the fan is hard, so I imagine it's hard at home.
Thank you, thank you. I would like to echo my colleagues' praise and comments. You know, I think what struck us to have this meeting, at least my view to have this meeting is, is we need to be flexible. We need to be flexible and fast. And I think, I realize it's only four days before our scheduled meeting, but I still think it's a touch point and a communication effort to communicate to parents, the community, to the board itself, to teachers, where we are today, what lessons we've learned, what we did wrong, what we have done right. And I think it's important. And I think Mrs. Ritchie has constantly, not constantly, but has spoken many times about communication and we need to over-communicate it. And I think this is a step in this direction. And I appreciate the time and understanding that we are now taking away from the work day for all. I mean, myself included, I should be at work as well. And I appreciate the parents who are missing work to watch this. So, but I think it's important and it's paramount for us to try to make sure we get this right. And what I've struggled with for the past few weeks is something my father always used to tell me as a child and even probably still does today is that if you don't, we don't have a problem if you don't have a solution. So I think, and I appreciate your point on the culture because it's resonating with me that, you know, there's a lot of just, we need to do this, we need to do this. And there's a lot of points of just, and I think there's a lot of looking for me and myself. And there's, we're trying up here to look, and I think you are as well, looking at the entire school community. And it's a difficult endeavor. And I think we're never going to please everyone at every time. So having said that, I think the question I have is, in doing some research as well, as Mr. Seeny did, I was flipping through New Canons program and they have four Fs. They're fact-based, they're fluid, they're flexible and they're fast. I think it's great to have this quick thing that you can quickly identify. But the biggest thing for me is what they've done is they've brought back their K through two kids to learn. And I think your rationale for hybrid of creating a transition where we learn what can work and what cannot. To me, that would work as well, bringing K through two. Now, you don't bring back all 4,700 plus kids into school at once. You bring back a small segment and you can learn what works, what doesn't work with a smaller group. And as admitted, we are struggling, if that's the right word, to properly educate them. So have we thought about bringing back a segment of the population earlier?
Yeah, that's, well, first of all, thank you for your comments, Dennis. And that's always a consideration. Any of those scenarios are consideration. I think New Canon, everybody does what they have to do and what they feel that is right for their communities. That's why we have local boards of education, which is a good thing. In terms of the actual time, I believe, and I believe in New Canon that the students are back for half days, right? So when you look at the time that the students are actually being educated, I don't want to speak about the district, but I just believe it's, they're back a half days, right? And our students are coming back a full day and then a remote day. So there are some equity in terms of just sort of time and process there, depending what way you want to look at that. And any options are always worth considering. So I mean, I just leave it at that. I mean, yes, any options are worth considering. That's why obviously we brought some children back four days a week right away.
Mr. Burke.
Thank you for taking the time for this meeting this morning. It's been informative to listen or read of the comments of the community. And when I think of our role as a board, it's to give you the tools to promote the vision that we've directed, which is all about the children. We've opened these schools in a hybrid fashion. It's something that's never been tried before. I think going to the moon, they had 10 years to figure out. You had about 10 days to figure out this when it came along in March. My only, my only charge is to listen to the fact-specific problems that some of these people are having. I can't pretend to know all of these fact situations or make a judgment on them. That's your job and the job of your very fine administration. My expectation is that you work the problem. And if in working the problem, one of the solutions is to change your plan and go ahead to a full learning, full learning, then you're the experts to make that decision. Outside of something catastrophically different or set of circumstances where we misperceive each other. I mean, I trust you, I trust your staff. I hear these problems. My expectation is that you will work them. And from what I hear this morning, you are. And so I thank you for that. And I think it's important to know that we got to this point where we're putting our children first. We got this collectively as a board. We've done our work, we've done our diligence and it's more than just relying on you. We're looking at these problems, that's why we're here. So thank you for your efforts and look forward to the rest of the presentation and look forward to what we hear on Tuesday.
Mrs. Ritchie, did I see your handball?
No.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Mrs. McCannan.
Just one more comment while we're on the sort of global reopening piece. I have questions under curriculum. But just a reminder to all of us sitting here and the public that there are guiding principles that came down from the state about how we're thinking about reopening. And the second guiding principle is allowing all students the opportunity to return to schools full-time starting in the fall. It doesn't specify exactly how, but just a reminder that that is how we're asked to operate, that is what we're attempting to solve for. And so, you know, leaving the first 29 days off the table, that that is our goal to build towards that either quickly or slowly. But that's the guiding principle. So just a reminder.
Absolutely.
Mr. Dree.
Thank you, Tara. Just a thank you to everyone. Good conversation as always from the parents. We have to listen to the teachers and the administration. We have to listen to the students also. I would ask as we go forward, Dr. Adley, because it is a recurring theme. And I think the time we've taken to learn how to get back to school, understand the challenges, adapt and move forward, will help us as a district. We are one of the best districts in the state, one of the best districts in the country. We will learn and we will move forward. I would ask that you think about as we continue to update the public and ourselves at these regular meetings, that we talk more about what's needed from a remediation standpoint as we learn what these students, especially in K through two, are going to need, what some of the special education children are going to need, that we figure out what's the right update as to how we're doing that and how we're tackling that. I think as a board, it's never too early to think about. We may need more time. So we have a winter break, we have a spring break, we have a certain amount of days we have to take into consideration to educate these children. It's stuff we need to think about. And the sooner that we think about it, the better because that will be a big task that I know the administration and the teachers are up for and the parents and the students. But we have to think about as we get them back in full time, what else are they going to need?
I just want to make sure I understand your comments, Doug. Certainly, I mean, I could turn around and say, yeah, we're going to do that and we're going to be responsible.
I'm not looking for, I'm not looking for a specific answer. But, you know, there are things that the students are missing as back to school. All right? And just, we have to make sure we continue to look at and listen what any additional needs are, what any additional resources that you need to, you know, make up for what may or may not be time lost depending on how quickly we ramp up and get back to normal.
That's fair, yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
So I know we'll probably hear more as we just, I think, on our next agenda item. But I do have two questions. One, we heard a lot today about changes in elementary access to live teaching. My reading of the plan is that has always been planned to change, different in hybrid. So if you could talk a little bit about that live teaching model at the elementary level? Because I think from what we've heard, it's been very successful at both middle school and high school. And the anxiety seems to be around our youngest learners and their ability to navigate technology. And then second, we heard a lot about, and with even, I think, true emotion, and I understand the parents' concern, I'm not, I'd like to address the concern and allegation that we are not meeting the state requirements for education around the $900, 900 hours and the 177 days. I don't believe that to be the case, but I hear the concern. So maybe you can speak to how, in fact, we are meeting our requirements by the law.
Thank you. So regarding the live model, I think most of us would probably observe that at the middle school, at the high school, it's transitioned into that fairly seamless. Like, there's been issues along the way and our staff has done a tremendous job sort of tackling that and navigating that. And obviously at the younger levels, which is more difficult, well, that's an area where we had to hiccup even, so that compounded it. But I'm starting on September 29th. The plan was always to transition into, that's one of the things we heard when we had the task force, more live instruction. And that is something that we're transitioning to on the 29th. I will say that, and working with the staff, right? Their mindset is this, sort of right now at the moment. And we're in the process of providing additional training for them for the 29th. I would say I'd be more comfortable giving you the details of that next, on Tuesday. In fairness, I wouldn't want to relate the exact details of that and advance them to staff. It's not that, well, they don't know. Well, they're working on the model if they are not, right? They understand we're transitioning to this model. We have processes in place to address that. You'll hear a wee bit of it. But Madam Chair, be happy to give fuller details of that.
I'm happy, I just think it's a concern that we've heard and we should satisfy.
The concern in general, though, is being addressed. It was always going to be addressed and it's always going to be more instructional during the actual instructional time blocks of content. But the content.
I know there's answered questions, but I also want to address this 900 hours, 177 days as required by law because the comments seem to imply that somehow we are not meeting our requirements.
So we have been compliant with the State Department's regulations. They have sent out new ones this past week, right? That delineate some of the R's. So that's another thing that we're actually doing to make sure that they're set. In some cases, they're sending out some conflicting information. So I just want to make sure what we're aligning is actually correct. I do believe that we are compliant, but we're also looking at the latest R's that were designated and making sure that online that we can actually say that we're doing that. So for instance, some of the time also includes time the students can actually do independent work, homework, so on and so forth. There's different things that constitute that. But I certainly would not have implemented anything that we're not compliant with. But again, I hold out the caveat, the board, the State Department is rolling out expectations, sometimes that are conflicting and sometimes that are after the event. But we are and will be compliant with all.
I saw Mr. Seeny's hand drop and then Mr. Marone.
I was just going to embellish, not only beyond the R's, but we heard about the state, I'm sorry, special ed, delivery of special ed services as well from a speaker earlier. Make sure we're ensuring.
I agree. I have questions around that. I was waiting for curriculum, but we decided where we'd like to handle it. Yeah, but I just, in terms of state compliance with state law, I'd like to be very clear that.
Yes, and I'll say the one area that is, that needs to be just clarified because they've given different direction, the 177 were the days. They were not requiring necessarily the 900 R's at that point. Subsequently, after school starts, we get this new memorandum. So we just need sort of clarity on that, but we will be compliant.
Mr. Marone and then Mrs. Ritchie.
Yeah, so I think one point that at least I have been lax on and I don't think we've probably discussed enough as a board. And we're focused on going back to school. And I think there's a, the population of 255 remote learners, which is over 5% of our school population. I can only imagine the anxiety that those families are feeling of, number one, having a child who is immunocompromised or feeling potential danger for venturing out of the home, as well as now we're going to put all kids back in school and they're going to get live instruction and my kid's going to be left behind. So I just want to make sure that we are going to do all we can to enhance our remote learning for those students as well as for, I think we have to be honest, the when we go back to remote learning at some point during the year, not an if, but I think, you know, maybe, I think we need to be prepared. Maybe I'm being too pessimistic, but I think we need to be prepared for the eventuality that we will have to do some type of remote learning during the next year. But I really believe that we need to make sure that, and we need to hear publicly that those students are not being forgotten.
And that was, that was one of our primary concerns in the plan, that we would do, where we would love the kids to be in school. And we believe that's the best place for them. We'll certainly be providing a high-quality educational experience. I think you'll hear some of this through the curriculum. You might be able to hear somewhat what we're doing.
Yeah, just a point of clarification in terms of left behind. Our remote students are live streaming into classes. So I would just, I'd love to hear the concern of being left behind academically just to understand it better. Maybe, maybe that's Mr. Tramburgh, but if they're live streaming into active classes, curriculum delivery should be happening in real time.
What the parents are saying is that they're not getting the full instruction. They're having difficulties. So I'm just trying to make sure that those concerns are heard at the board table.
So just, just so I am clear, because I think you have a real question there. I think the concerns we're hearing are about K5, maybe even K2, but K5 and hybrid model versus, right now, when they're having their remote learning at home versus the remote learners. And I just want to be able to answer your question fully or make sure the administration is, are you talking about our remote learners, the 5%?
I'm talking about the, I think we're hearing a vocal group, I don't know if it's a majority or a minority, of families who want their kids to go back full-time. And they are displeased with the remote learning. So if they're displeased, I don't know how the, I can't understand how the full-time remote learners are happy. So I'm trying to understand, maybe they're being silent, but I'm just trying to advocate for them that we need to do a, make sure we do the best job we possibly can for those students.
Thanks, that helps.
I do have a slide on the full-time remote learners.
We're going to talk about this in the next item. So we don't want to steal Chris's thunder right now, so we'll get to it.
No, I just wanted to clarify, thank you, Mr. Marone, where you are. Are there?
Well, the 240 remote students that we have today, I think it would be great to hear what grade levels we have them at just as a board to sort of get an idea of what we're looking at. Do we have a lot of K through two? Are there elementaries? If I'm going to guess, it's more middle high school students that choose the full remote. And then the other suggestion I have to everyone is we have the Darian reopening plan tab on the website. If you click down, there's something called exclusion and contact tracing. It's an amazing if-then scenario for basically everything that potentially happened if someone contracts COVID. So I encourage everybody to take a look at that.
So can you repeat the name of the tab? You got a little muffled.
It's called exclusion and contact tracing. So if you click on Darian's reopening plan, and I would encourage that, maybe we should just put that on the front page so everybody has it.
It's the reopening tab, not the plan on the left-hand side.
So you go into the plan, you click on Darian reopening plan and then you, there's a, you can click on the, and bring down another list of items. And one of the items that you can click on is called exclusion and contact tracing. And it's a very detailed slide presentation about what happens if this happens during COVID. So I encourage everybody to look that over. It's extremely informative. So Deb makes a really good point. We've had a lot of questions, what if? I do think that there's a lot of emails that go around right now for everybody, both work, home, family. So as much as we can promote and communicate this reopening tab on our website, I think there's a lot of good questions and it's of value if you're looking for a quick answer. And if you're not getting your answers there, I would urge you to go to your principals at the school building or central office because I think they do have many of the answers, but that's a great first resource. I will say the board has gotten a lot of sometimes individual questions and while we're happy to respond and forward those on, that's probably a slower. that's probably a slower route to getting your answer, just because it takes a couple touches of people. So certainly, building administrators are a great first place to go to with questions. We're always happy to hear your questions and comments and forward them on, but that, that initial chain of command, I think, will provide you with a much faster answer to your question. So if there are no more general reopening questions, we'll move on to curriculum, we started to appear there anywhere, is everyone comfortable with that?
Tara, can I just jump onto what you're talking about for the chain of command? One of the things I've heard, Alan, is some confusion over what's an appropriate amount of time for a response from a staff member. Can you speak to that, please, just kind of building on what you said?
I think in the past, there's an expectation within 24 hours. I think that during this particular time period, I, I just think there's a lot of communications going around, and people actually have been able to do that, so I don't know that that's completely reasonable. But I think a reasonable timeframe is, is something that we should expect, now quantify on that at the moment, but I mean, maybe 48 hours is, is better at this point, is more reasonable to be able to get back to someone, I think that's probably fair.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we will move on to the requested item of presentation and discussion over curriculum adjustments, Dr. Adley and Mr. Tranberg.
Good morning, it's good to see everyone. So this section of the presentation is really framed at looking at some of the lessons learned from spring, and how that informed some of the, the new learning, as we would need to present it this fall, and some ideas for moving forward. And I'm just going to start with a quote that found its way to me yesterday, it's a great quote. And it resonates with me especially, it's, it's an Abe Lincoln quote, and I remember sometimes you see and hear things just at the right time when you need to hear them. And when I was a high school principal, during a, just a busy time with big transition, kind of like we're in right now, but not quite like this, someone dropped Lincoln on leadership on my desk, and so it was kind of funny that this is what was presented to me yesterday. So I thought I would share it, because it speaks to the importance of, of planning and preparation. So with that, these are three of the biggest lessons learned from the spring that we've really used to shape how we opened this school year. And teaching technology is one of the biggest pieces. Because if you think back to the spring, closing schools in March, we had almost an entire year of learning of, of technology, especially for our kindergarten students. The big difference that we had when we opened this year is we had kindergarten students who needed to do a lot of independent learning and may have never opened a Chromebook, because they've had a tablet if they've had any technology at all. So simultaneously, trying to teach that technology while teaching the content, has caused some of the, I guess the unrest is the best way to describe it, as we launched the year. The other important piece is the relationships that existed. So when we closed school in March, teachers knew their students, students knew their teachers, students knew the peers in their class that were on the screen with them, and we did not have that luxury right now, because we're not only learning school, we are also preparing students for the potential of needing to learn remotely or needing to learn in hybrid. And they're learning how to learn in hybrid while they're in hybrid, if, if that makes any sense at all. And that's challenging, especially for young learners. And the third part is the importance of assessment, and this time is crucial to us, because we have students in front of us, and it is important that we get some of those benchmarks sooner rather than later, should we have to face the unfortunate need to either go to hybrid again or be a remote. And this has lots of text, which are not my favorite slides, but I think it's helpful to see. On the left, this is how we typically start a school year, and, and I will also frame this as much of this presentation is geared toward elementary and K2, because that's where so many of the questions are. But during a typical school year, teachers and students are doing all of these things, really to learn how to be in school, and learn what school looks like, and learn those daily routines. In addition to that, this year, if you look on the right-hand side, we are also doing all of these other things, which are competing for instructional time. And they also are not, they're not things we necessarily would do to establish the learning environment and, and meet friends and make friends, but they're still critical, especially technology. So from the, the first day that our students were in, they were opening Chromebooks, learning how to log on, activate Zoom links. So that is a big change that our students faced. Some other new experiences that students and teachers have are just the toggling between live and virtual learning environments. So we have teachers who have the tremendous task of meeting the needs of the students that are right in front of them, while also tending to the needs of students that are home. And I believe Mr. Burke very eloquently asked the question of how do you support doing this, several times at meetings, and it takes practice. And that's what we're doing right now. These are things that you can't practice until you have the students in front of you, you can practice with other adults, you can test the infrastructure, which we've done all of those things. But these initial days have given us the opportunity to do exactly that. At the same time, teachers are also working with some full-time remote learners, so those are the students that have opted out of in-person learning. And I have another slide on that later, so I can dig into that a little bit more. The new routines I mentioned, so new routines, we often think about, how do we line up for class, how do we go to recess, how do we go to lunch? But now the new routines also include, how do we wash our hands, how do we stay safe, how do we stay an appropriate distance from each other? How do we come into school and leave the school? So that's, that's just a lot of routines to teach students, and it's a lot to manage from the teacher perspective, because they are thinking about the health and safety of their students and themselves from the time they walk in the door until the time that they go home. The other piece is they're navigating content delivery in reading, writing, and math with reduction instructional minutes, because we have, the reality is, you can't do all of these new routines without taking time away from some of those things that are very important. Another variable, just to, this is really an echo of what Dr. Adley said, with the test to our infrastructure, while we have added the bandwidth from 1 gigabyte to 3 gigabytes with switches and everything that goes with it, we've also added 500 Chromebooks, and we have 450 IPVO digital cameras that are now in circulation. And it's a big test on our infrastructure that we could not, we couldn't really practice, because you're not going to have 2,000 people signing in until there's 2,000 people that need to sign in. So that's part of the new learning that we faced as well. And as far as software goes, while we have tons of new instructional software that's been integrated from last spring, we've really narrowed that down for the fall, but this software I'm talking about is just how students access learning. So PK2 learning seesaw is new, and some people might ask, well, why would you add something new at this time? And this is really in response to the surveys and feedback we heard from families in the spring, with the desire for more independence in student learning. Seesaw is a tool that is designed for student independence, it is easy to use, but it takes time to learn it, so that's the, that's the crux of seesaw. Google Classroom is how our students in grades 3 through 12 are accessing their learning content. And we're also using Zoom instead of Google Meet. So again, that might seem like a change, especially for elementary students, but that's intentional, because Zoom is more secure than Google Meet. Zoom also has features that lets teachers break students into smaller groups and work with them independently. It has additional features for chat and participation and reactions. So those are all reasons why we moved to Zoom, even though it is a bit of a, a shift, it's a necessary shift. And I'm going to ask Lynda Johnson to unmute and join us for the slide.
Thank you, Chris. Good morning, Ms. Ackman, Dr. Adley, members of the Board of Education. As Dr. Adley mentioned, the curriculum, along with the scope and sequence, hasn't changed this year. What has changed, as we know, is the way in which students are accessing the learning in one of three ways. In-person learning, remote learning, or total remote learning. During in-person learning, students are engaged in lessons and guided practice with their teacher and peers in the classroom. During remote learning, students are applying what they learned from in-person learning to independent practice. For example, they might apply a learned skill or strategy to a math task or an independent reading book. Currently, during full remote learning, students are receiving learning from pre-recorded lessons that are aligned to the objectives and teaching practices during in-person learning. As a result, we have adjusted the focus of instruction to be primarily on literacy and numeracy during the hybrid reopening phase. During the summer months, my colleague Cory Gillette and I worked with teams of talented teachers, which is a practice we've had in place in previous years. The talent on our curriculum team is representative of all teachers in Darian public schools. We created pacing guides, lesson plans, and instructional materials for in-person learning, remote learning, and full-time remote learning. Presently, we anticipate completing the first unit in these content areas in a similar timeline as in the past. I will add that there is variation in the sequence in 5th grade math, because, as you know, this is our first year implementing the new resource, Math and Focus, in 5th grade. The order that we are teaching the curriculum varies from what we, what and how we taught it when we used investigations. But again, the curriculum hasn't changed. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Lynda, and I'll ask Lynda and Cory to stay on in case there are questions that they could support answering at the end. Moving on to the, the secondary piece, the secondary is very similar. The word is no substantive change, that's only because some of the order of things might be changed based on the time of year, hoping that they might be able to get to something later. How science labs are happening are obviously adjusted, but there's no real change in the curriculum and the content and the standards. So while there are adjustments, the goals are in place, and the curriculum is in place there. There have been some great questions just about the time, and navigating the time and the loss of time. So typically, this is just a view of, and again, looking at an elementary classroom. A lesson really has all of these pieces, that start with new learning, and you move to the guided practice, so that's the teacher working with the students to show them how. Students move toward independent practice, and then there's an opportunity for assessment for learning, which is often through an exit ticket in an elementary classroom. And then an opportunity to reflect and plan for the next lesson, so that new learning can be presented in response to exactly what the teacher saw that day. The challenge here, obviously, is not all students have been in front of the students, not all students have been in front of the teacher on any given day. So the ABC groups that Lynda described, the A students are receiving that new learning, and they're really focusing on those two. So when students are in school, because of the reduced time, they have time for the new learning and the guided practice. These other pieces happen on the B day, when they're home and doing the independent practice. That does not necessarily mean that we're losing an entire day of instruction, because independent practice is a continuation of that new learning that was introduced, and students still have access through a video of what that lesson looked like, so they need to revisit. So there's not new learning, a new concept doesn't mean that you learn a new concept that day, and it's learned and you move on to the next. You have more than one day very often to practice that skill, and so it's just broken down through these slides in that way. The other piece that I mentioned is assessment, and we are getting ready to launch our assessments, especially our, our universal screeners and some formative assessments that will give us insight into reading levels, math readiness, fluency, and all of the pieces that we have not been able to gather data on since the spring. We did follow the state guidance, and we did not jump right in the first week of school with assessing students, but we are starting those assessments next week. As far as the full-time remote learners that Mr. Maroni mentioned, so the left column really represents the start of the year and what their experience might have looked like, which was just like all students adapting to new software. They're learning curriculum through the videos, because they are really, without having that A day with the direct instruction, they are learning from the video instruction. And the way that the teacher checks in is hopefully through an independent time that happens throughout the week, hopefully twice a week, that's the, the design that we had. What we're working toward, especially number two under the working toward, is the additional synchronous instruction in the content areas. The reason that we did not start there is because the decision was made to focus on, if we are asking students to stream in for extended periods of time, how do we transition in in the most appropriate way? And we felt collectively that a focus on SEL was going to be the priority over focusing in on those content areas, because that's a consistent message that we heard, and that is something that cannot be captured with a student working in isolation. They can't build the relationships if they're not streaming in with their peers for those things. It's much harder to do during math and reading instruction than it would be during opportunities like a morning meeting and those closing circles. And the assessment, we do have an assessment plan for those full-time remote learners as well, which is offering a space away from other students, away from other cohorts, where they can come in and complete those tasks, so that will be communicated by the end of this week. And we need to establish some routines for them, so they can circulate some materials, especially books. Part of that site's here, correct? Yes, right here where we said, actually. Some thoughts on moving forward, our big focus is welcoming back, welcoming all students back to school on the 29th. And I'll just remind everyone that when we welcome everyone back, we have a new classroom culture in every single class. So in some ways, it's a first day of school all over again, where new peer groups are being established and relationships are being built. With technology and content, we've been very focused on using technology to access the learning. And now, as that becomes more settled, we will move toward using the technology to to reflect the learning and show the learning, because it will become an important assessment tool as well, should we be in a situation where we're remote again. The assessment, as I mentioned, and then continuing to develop the remote learning plan, because all of this is tied to, and, and I'm sure when we're, I know by comparison, it's very easy to look and think where we ended the year with the amount of time we had and how we're starting the year. And in the eyes of some people, it might feel like it's a little bit less. But how we start school, especially K1 and 2, it's learning about school, as I said, so the content itself is very challenging to deliver through remote lessons. So everything is happening twice in that aspect for the, the elementary level. And so hopefully that explains some of, of the questions that are coming. We can't give students content to learn if they haven't had any opportunity for direct instruction in that, so we're doing the best we can with what we have. I mentioned extensions in the last, the last time we met, which are built into the slides. And we're also putting some extensions on, under the, thank you, Mrs. Ritchie, for mentioning the reopening website. There's also a teaching and learning tab on that website, and you click elementary learning, and there's resources there for extensions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Tranberg, are there any questions or comments?
I have a question, can you guys hear me?
Mrs. McCannan.
Anyone hear me?
Again, thank you for the quality of the presentation, I really appreciate the more formal way of, of looking at your work and how you've been thinking about it, it helps me understand it a lot better. And I would imagine many members of the community and the board would feel familiar, so tremendous thanks for that, I recognize you're working at the speed of light or maybe faster. And it's hard to take the time to just put together a presentation. I have a couple of questions, my first really piggybacks on, on something Mr. Cini said earlier, which is, I'm thrilled to hear what the timeline for the assessment is, and I appreciate the point that curriculum per se is not going to change. But what will the communication look like, once we sort of have a snapshot of where we are and how much remediation we have to do, and whether there need to be adjustments in the timeline? What is your plan for looking at that and communicating that back to the board?
So I will certainly invite Cory or Lynda to jump in, but my response of that is, we have to see how the students do first. Because what we're anticipating, because all students had a very similar experience, that we're going to see people in the same place, where we would, we would address that through our regular instruction. So we would make adjustments there and communicate that if that was necessary. And then if there are any students that are outliers, we'll use the benchmarks that we always do to use our, our regular SOBI process. But again, it's a wonderful question. So that's my initial thought, but we need to, need to see the data to make some decisions. My instinct is that we will, we'll see students in a similar place, so we can make a decision by grade level and not, not to, not need to make too many individual decisions.
So we're gonna go to Mrs. Stein, who's been trying to get our attention, but she has a small box on there.
Do you guys hear me now?
I'm sorry I missed you last round, but curriculum.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, because you two. I guess you see me saying the board can't hear you. So, sorry, I have another question, I'll leave till the policy discussion, which I wanted to ask in the beginning, but Chris, can you just talk, we did get a lot of questions about us sort of shutting down K2 last week to do some improvements, can you speak specifically to what tweaks or improvements you guys made so that our public and parents are aware of what went on last week? public and parents are aware of what went on last week?
Generally speaking, not all students would have successfully been able to log on to their devices to access learning. And so the decision to delay it was made so all students would have equal access to the learning on that day.
So I had asked a question surrounding that last meeting, and probably the wrong word, but I said an autopsy. I don't mean that, but kind of a dive into what went wrong and what's going better. We may have those answers. It may be too early, being Thursday, but if you have some of those answers today, that would be great. If not for Tuesday, just some what's improved and what can K2 expect going forward, because I imagine it's on a continuum of, based on everything you just said, of increased content and curriculum delivery.
So I can definitely talk in more detail with, on Tuesday, but so much of the K2 was really about making sure all students had that access, and I can talk about on Tuesday what some of those barriers were.
Great.
I think also, I think I've said, I think, I think the actual timing and deployment of the, of the 2000 Chromebooks, just that timeframe of giving us enough timeframe to deploy it, make sure it's ready, so that's my responsibility overall. So that's, that's an area where I would, I would reflect on and go, did we give enough time to that process?
But to clarify, now, Mr. Dine, I'll go to you, because I think sometimes we say deployment, some of us may know what it is, but the public says, well, why didn't you just deploy them earlier? There was a delay, given the time at which we ordered the Chromebooks, and then the backlog of everyone in the country looking, there was a delay in actually receiving Chromebooks.
Oh, that's, that's definitely true.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure the public has had the chance to have that information.
Yeah, we had to, the technology department did a tremendous job because we're still waiting for some of our new Chromebooks from, from our youngest age to actually come in. So we had to redeploy nearly just a lot of Chromebooks to make sure that everybody had one and was ready to be used. So yes, that is true.
Mr. Dine, I'm sorry, and then Mr. Maroni.
Chris, thank you. This was a great presentation, and I think it, it kind of brought me back to, it's been a while since I've had kids in elementary school and the excitement of the first couple of days and the interactions, but I think what it helped me understand is a conversation I had with a parent and then a teacher around, what do those first couple of days look like? It's socialization, it's getting to know the school, the hallways, the teachers, the classrooms, where I sit, what's the rub for, what's the overall look and feel of the classroom? So there's a lot of work that needs to continue to be done as we get everyone back to school. But I also, a teacher helped me, and I think it put it in perspective in that, you know, the comments about, wow, you know, my son or daughter was done in 15 or 20 minutes doing their work. Well, that's because that, that person was by themselves doing the work and they weren't one of 22 or one of 20 that they counted their numbers, they did their alphabet, they read their story, then the next student did it. So that 15 minutes for that individual young boy or girl was an hour or two for the whole 22 kids in the classroom. So I think sometimes we have to step back and put that in perspective, that yes, it may not seem like, you know, they have the right amount of time being spent on the remote learning, but that's part of the challenges of being remote versus being in with all our students.
Absolutely, and I'll just add, the thing that we take for granted at times is kindergarteners aren't all readers when they come to school. So for them to need to do this independently without actually having access to any text and extensive things certainly complicates matters a great deal.
Mr. Maroni.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Chris, for this. It's been, it was fantastic. I actually have a bunch of questions, so I'm not sure how to do them, but I'll try to group one together. You mentioned the enhanced SEL, and I would like to hear a little more about that, as well as, I'm not sure I quite understood your point about synchronous and direct instruction versus SEL. It sounded like that was a, a conflict, and I don't understand quite why it's one or, or the other and why it can't be both.
So I'll answer that. The second half of that first was just being conscious of the amount of time that we were asking students and teachers to live stream. That was about choosing between the two, because that's what we had decided. We went toward SEL because that was something we felt like we would not be able to do without streaming at that time. With going deeper with SEL, a few things. One is we used responsive classroom first 10 days of school. We had a group of teachers who came together, they were called the SEL Collaborative Action Team. There was a group that worked elementary K2, 135, a middle school, and a high school group, who all developed plans to support more SEL integration in each building. So at the secondary level, that looked like four teachers every day. These are some things you can do to build relationships with your students and also develop some specific lessons that would be implemented in advisory. So that was the secondary approach. And elementary was really using that morning time to integrate the SEL lessons, which at that level also includes some of those health and safety protocols, and very often using read alouds, because that is a great way to create some common vocabulary and meaning in between students and have those discussions. And we also added the closing circle as a piece that some teachers may have done in the past, but now all teachers make that a part of the day. So those are some of the scheduling core components of what that looks like.
If I can follow up with that. What, what I think I would appreciate as a, as a board member, and hopefully the board agrees, is that I would like to see some data points on those and some, some follow-up, especially hearing the comments in public this morning about, you know, their constant tears, there's a lot of anxiety, there's frustration, there's children who are withdrawing into their, their former selves and now, and progress they had made last year, they've lost. So I'd love to hear whether it be some case studies or some data specifically on how we can see the results of our SEL intervention.
Yes, I know, I can actually work with my colleague to my right here, and I believe on an upcoming agenda, we're going to hear about school psychologist update, and that, that's integrated in that presentation as well.
I have a curriculum question. I see you, Mrs. McCannan. So Chris, it's been asked a couple different ways, but I was going to ask it again. So in terms of the, the vision for direct instruction for young and middle elementary particularly, and I'm thinking about two different cohorts, really, you know, there's, there's, right now, we did talk earlier about the fact that in middle and high school, there's a lot of live streaming, but that's not happening in the same way in elementary school. And I think it can happen differently for fifth grade than it comes to kindergarten for the reasons we've discussed. So can you break down a little bit sort of early elementary pre-readers, middle elementary, upper elementary, what that vision for direct instruction looks like? And then can you talk about remote learning specifically, those who are, for whatever reason, are health or otherwise, who've decided they cannot be in a school building, and how they're accessing any direct instruction? I know you mentioned videos, but.
I'll, I'll take the second question first. So when you think about remote learning and looking at the, we also developed our remote learning plan, should we go to full-time remote by necessity? The way that that plan is developed is students are participating in both synchronous and asynchronous learning, just as we, we've used that language all along. What we're moving toward is when there's new learning and there's direct instruction that's necessary in content areas, that would be a time where there would be live instruction. We are, and I, that also couples with the first part of your question of what does it look like exactly? I don't want to say too much. I can say a lot more Tuesday, just because it's getting rolled out for our teachers over the next couple of days. But it is, it's a move toward not just live streaming during the SEL, but when we have those new learning opportunities in the content areas, that there will be some live time there. I'll also add that that doesn't mean that students click on Zoom and are in the classroom for the seven hours of the day. There are times when a teacher might be live, there are times where the camera might be on and mic is, our camera's off, mic is off, but it's still connected, so the student can ask for help. But those are all of the things that we're working on and developing, which I can talk about more on Tuesday.
So, but may I just, so the curriculum staff will be, be sharing some, some templates and some processes, but I don't want to take away the organic nature of the teacher. So the teacher will have two or three, I'll just say in angry, maybe two or three students in a class, maybe none, maybe more, but just in general, like two or three remote, remote learners. I don't want to take away like the neat work that the teacher does and how he or she knows how to be a kindergarten teacher, whether it's over the, over the remote is more challenging, but they, but they know how to be a kindergarten teacher for a reason, and how to pace and how to engage and how to respond. I don't want to take that away. In fact, I think we're completely, like, we should be very much dependent on that. And I will say I'm very hopeful, I don't want to be optimistic about it, but when the teachers do go into that mode, then they will kick in, because they do. And I think it'll be helpful to the students and also to them, so I just, I just want to make, I mean, everything depends and shouldn't be prescriptive, anyway.
Mrs. Ritchie.
Thank you, Chris. That's a lot of great information. It's very helpful. I think for Tuesday, what I would like to see is a day in the life, sort of, and I think Jill alluded to this, like, what's happening, I don't know if you had to do K through by itself, probably, but just like at the different grade levels, what does their remote day look like? I'm really not in favor of a child sitting in front of a Chromebook for a full school day. So the, the way I see it is there are opportunities for them to, while they're remote learning, get some exercise, go do an art project, which is younger ages. So I just would love to hear from, from you, what you perceive and what parents should sort of think of as a, a day in the life of the remote learner. And this is because we potentially may all be back, all of our students back into remote learning. I hope not, but we might be. So we have to be ready for that, and I think everybody needs to be ready for that.
Absolutely.
And again, I just, the addendum 12 came at us after school started, and there's a lot of information there, and I think that we have faith and trust that this is what we're abiding by and following, but I think it's important, because we have heard from parents that we're, we're failing and we're not, we're not following the guidance. So I think it's important for you and everybody, all the administration, to reiterate that what is happening is what the guidance is, and the guidance is fluid, the guidance is changing, and we're adapting, and we're adapting quickly. We might not have put it into words like you've seen and has, but I think, I believe we are doing that. So I think you.
Can I follow up? We, now I'm going off my notes, so forgive me, but I am trying to be responsive to the public concerns we're hearing. I've now heard twice about special education. I think once was, you know, special education services hadn't been delivered since May 1st from the CPAC co-chair. Today, the comment, if I have it correct, and please, I take notes and I'm timing, so if there's any misstatements, I'm happy to hear that. But the question was, are special education services being delivered and why weren't they delivered the first day? Can we talk a little bit about special education, making sure our services are being delivered, that we're meeting our IEP requirements for our students who need help accessing their education?
Yes.
I asked right as you were taking a drink of water. That was unfair.
Yes, we can. And I did go back and look at addendum six that the parent was referring to and the opening, and I won't go through each part, but welcome everyone to look at it. It also describes in the prior paragraph that schools will make every effort to make sure that all, not every effort, to make sure, ensure that all students receiving stay consistent with their IP's, and those are the implementation plans. We did begin services day one. That means it may not be your service if you're in a school that has reading twice a week in a six-day cycle, it may not have been a day one that you received your services. So if you're looking at different cycles, that would be true also, this eight-day cycle, a six-day cycle, and a five-day cycle. So the frequency would indicate when it begins is one area. The other piece is, in one of our schools, we, two speech therapists did not return. So we were faced with filling those positions. The good news is they are filled now. They were not on week one. So those services have to be made up. So if you happen to have speech and language twice a week in the first six days, you may have missed one of them, and you can catch it the second week. But the related service providers were diligent, took all the information, are making sure that those are made up. They may not be made up this week, because we don't want to pull kids out of classes as they're returning to school, but they are responsible keeping anything that was missed with our new speech therapist. We're excited they're there.
Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry.
The other piece is for our intensive learners, that did, they did begin on day one. So for any students who have a four-day program and are in one of our DLC, ALCA, Excel programs, they did receive their services as of day one.
Thank you. Any other curriculum questions? Mr. Maroni?
So I think one of the other questions I have, two more, I think, one, and one is, to frame it, the expectation of parents. So I think what we have done a poor job is, is communicating the expectation of parents for those children who are not in school. And I think we need to communicate better of, of what that is. I think there's, at least from hearing, I think there's this expectation that the child is going to sit in front of their computer for a time, and the teacher is literally going to beam out and teach them at, at their home. And I think there's a, a difference from our expectations versus that. Maybe I'm being too dramatic, but I think we need to be clear as to what, what we expect parents to do while their child is home learning, and, and communicate that to the parents so they understand that it's not just the kindergartner is able to do this on their own, they're going to need parental help, and to what extent, and how we, how we expect that to happen, because I heard the word social contract. I think we could be, you know, breaking that social contract to parents, and that there's a difficulty, especially with dual-income parents, of how much time they have to devote to their child for, for learning and education versus our expectation of how much time we need to do that.
Mr. Dine.
Chris, I would just go back to, and again, thank you for the details on the rollout and the technology discussion, not to answer right now, but just to continue to think, what do you need resource-wise? I don't know if the thousand tickets have gone down to a couple of hundred tickets, and if there's anything that you need around that. I know you will, but I feel like I have to say it because it's important. We're here to help with those resources and make sure you have those resources.
Thank you. That's much appreciated.
And this is Klein. The same thing, you know, I mean, I've gotten the cohort of people I interact with, I have an own, my own special needs child, it's been very positive. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of communication and staying in touch with the teachers, but I, I feel I have to add that our experience and the experience of a close-knit group of friends has been very positive. So thank you, and thanks to all those folks involved, but again, let us know the resources that you need.
Mr. Maroni, I'm going to call you. I'm also going to ask for a clarification. The charges that we are breaking our social contract, how do you feel we could not?
I'm, I'm not saying that we couldn't. I'm just saying I don't think we, we've communicated that to parents, that it's going to be different than when you, when you put your kid on a bus and then, and have them dropped off seven hours later. Okay, that's all. I think we have not done a good job of communicating that to parents, that this is not the, the school year that you were in 2019, 2018. This is a different year and you have different expectations. So to build on Duke's comment, my, my last question, a little more specific, is have we seen a decrease of these thousand tickets? Have we narrowed them down and have we, have we succeeded, or is it now too?
I can follow up for, for hard numbers, but I believe that there's been a gradual decrease, and that the tech people definitely deserve a shout-out, because they've, they've been working pretty hard these days.
And we did actually, after the last board meeting, go back to the Director of Technology and share that if you need resources. I think the problem is actually, and honestly, you can't get the resource right now.
Well, it's a good point.
It's just very difficult to get, but the, the offer certainly was, certainly appreciated, continues to be. I just want to say, just, Mr. Maroni, even though, just, in terms of, I certainly would respect more communication, different, better, ongoing, particularly around the remote learners, I think it's helpful. But I did, I did think, I don't know if we communicated to parents, like, this is not an ordinary year. I mean, in a number of ways, I think, but I just, I don't think it's just we didn't communicate about the nature of the different year. I will certainly recognize, I think we could do more on the remote learning, be very, and be clear about that, so, yes.
Mrs. Ritchie.
So just to build on that, so when I requested my day in the life, maybe we make sure to include parental involvement. So as a remote learner, kindergarten is going to require, and let's face it, 100% of your attention. It's, you know, you pop a kindergartner in front of your Chromebook and you turn your back and they're off and running. So, you know, obviously at different grade levels, there's going to be a different need for parental involvement. And again, I'll talk about communication, because that's what I do at every meeting, and I've been promoting the idea of some sort of virtual town hall for each school, just for parents to not only ask questions, but get answers to questions if there are needed answers to be given. I think it's an important thing, method, that we Thing, method that we can give parents to just get immediate answers. And I've heard of parents waiting a long time for responses. From administration to emails that they've sent. So. If there's a way that we can improve upon that and just get information quickly to parents, I think that's, it's a very fluid situation. Things are constantly changing. It's very stressful for everyone. And I think the more that we can be out in front of it and just interacting with parents and the community, the better, the better. Thank you.
Just to, just to build on Mrs. Ritchie's point, um. I will be proposing an amendment to the meeting next week to add a curric, uh, communications committee. As well as in a curriculum or, or whether we call it, uh. Curriculum or education delivery committee to, to try to hone in on these items as opposed to trying to do it with the nine of us in, in a larger form and not being focused. It would be better served. I think your point is, is trying to find a solution to communication and how best we can do that.
So, um, it's an interesting thought. My only thing, what I'd like this board to consider in terms of responsibilities is what are board responsibilities to communicate and what are. Um, district responsibilities, administrative responsibilities to communicate. I do think that when we had the Zoom meetings. With the principals, um, about the reopening plan, they were highly successful because there were very individual technical. Answers that principals could give that board members just can't give, even if we'd like to. I think it's important for board communication, but I just think that we need to really make sure that we delineate. And it's not hiding behind the administration. But if someone asks me how lunch is going to operate. Dr. Adley and his team really have the responsibility of making sure lunch, lunch operates. I believe you do. That's on an indictment of you, but I'm saying that's one of the problems that you have. Or one of the areas that you've said you're constantly looking to revise. The board has the responsibility to ask questions, to press, to represent thoughts and things it's hearing. But in terms of the communication. I just want to make sure we delineate so that people know the right people to go to for answers.
And I, and I think that's part of what the communication committee should be doing. I think we, you know, to be honest, I think this board has struggled. From with, with the hybrid reopening, from the decrease to the recommended budget, to the school busing, to be out before I was on a board with Fitch and a cafeteria expansion. We've struggled with communication to the community. And I just think to Mrs. Ritchie's point, I think we can do a better job of doing that.
I raise the point of order. And since this wasn't an agenda item and, and I support Denny's, uh, suggestion, but not the time.
Yeah, we are off of curriculum and special. Thank you for the point of what it's recognized.
But, but thank you.
Um, any other curriculum questions? Okay, moving forward to the review and discussion of Board of Education. Related to the policies of Darian Public Schools that have been affected by the reopening plan. Mrs. Thiel. And Mr. Burke, I believe, but.
Well, I, I will say that we, uh, have some policies that we're bringing before the, uh, policy committee, uh, tomorrow. I would defer to our presentation, uh, at that time. Some of the, uh, policies relate to. Masks and other policies and overall penumbra that gives the board the ability to make. Just COVID related policies in this, uh, environment and another related to our, uh. Meetings and conducting them in, uh, in this environment. So they are all, uh. Designed to comport with state statute, which is generally how our policies, uh, tend to, uh, bubble up. We've been. Compliant to, uh, to this point with state and, uh. Our local, state and local regulations, but, uh, this will then codify within our policy, some of our practices that we've been. Uh, undertaking, uh, and I'll leave the specific discussion of those policies to.
Okay. I'd like to be respectful to the members who put this on the agenda. If there's something in particular that you are searching for. Mrs. McCammon and Mr. Seeny, I think so. There were half raises on either side. Who would like to take it?
Do you want to? I, thank you. I mean, uh, this is something that we, uh, I think I mentioned privately that it's. Time to take a look at this and glad to see the committee taking a look at some of the policies around COVID. I think from a bigger perspective, why, uh, I mean, I wrote the, the, the request is to kind of, if we could, uh, take some time at an upcoming meeting and kind of review the role of. You know, the policy nine one one zero. Um, there's been many. Uh, or several, I guess in a better way, uh, accusations that we've abdicated our responsibility. And maybe we can, um, you know, review as a board, what we think as a board is our responsibility. I mean, if you look, I talked about it earlier, I touched upon it. The ambiguities of the, uh, state regulations and how they might contradict our local policies. Um, you know, I look at how certain boards have voted. Uh, and supported the administration and their decisions and which model to pursue. Um, you know, New Haven has famously actually rejected its superintendent and told its district to go remote. Um, so. You know, it, as an agenda item at a future meeting, uh, I thought it'd be pretty. Interesting, important to see where we kind of flush out on here. And again, it goes back to, you know, uh. We've given a lot of input as individual members. To the administration and how to proceed. I think going forward, you know, around this return to school full time, it might be helpful for the administration to get an endorsement of that plan. And so as a board, maybe we can decide whether or not to do that. I know we can make motions. But it's difficult if it's not also on the agenda. You got to change the agenda to have an action item. So I thought it'd be a productive discussion. Around that, uh, you know, the role of the board, policy nine one one.
Uh, Mrs. Stein, is your hand raised?
Yeah, um, I, I guess, John. I think it's a discussion we have to have because it's been raised by the public, it's been raised by board members, but I still go back to the fact that the. State has said the authority on reopening rests with the superintendent. I think as a board, we've done our diligence, we've asked questions. I think we've shown our support. Um, but personally, I, you know. I don't see what a vote gets us, um, when ultimately it's the superintendent's decision. Um. So I'd love to hear other board members' thoughts, but on this, I think it's, it's very clearly rests with the superintendent. I think we've asked the right questions. We've pushed on areas where we're concerned, where we're hearing concern from the public. The superintendent has heard those concerns. And we've had a good dialogue. So, uh, that's where I net out on it.
Thoughts? Mrs. McCammon. Do you want to stay on that topic or? I think we should. I would say, John, I appreciate a, a future meeting, but I do think this has come up now several times in public comment and have abdicated responsibility. I think some board members. I mean, I think you've been vocal about your concern around here. So I think. We don't need to be exhaustive on it, but we should at least air it out and kind of not have it hanging over.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. So, oh, Mrs. Stein, go ahead.
Sorry, I was saying, I think we have to put it to bed one way or the other because it's hanging out there and. Um, I, I just think we need to, to hash it out and, and move on.
Yeah, I'm just in the interest of time. We're well over time today. That's why I kind of push it out maybe.
This was one of them. You know.
You know. Sorry, Mrs. Stein, I feel like we keep cutting Katie off. I'm sorry.
I mean, John, I thought the point of this meeting, you guys, I mean, I thought this was one of your big. Concerns. So I think to me, this is something as a board, we do need to figure out. I, you know, if you want to push it to Tuesday. Fine, we're a week before we're going into full remote. So.
In order to can't, we can't amend a special meeting agenda. So there cannot be a vote today.
Right.
That's fine. I think there's an issue over, and let me just frame it and then you all can decide if I framed it correctly. There's an issue over. Whether this board should have voted on the reopening plan. And in not doing so, did the board not exercise its oversight? Authority? Or did it not show support to its superintendent for the plan? So I think I would agree that bore, there are boards in the state who have voted and they voted. They voted kind of at their own will. Whether that vote had power or not. Remains to be seen. In some districts it did. Certainly the message it sent to its superintendent was either positive or quite negative. That the superintendent has authority and a board would go with it one way or the other. Um, I would, I will stand and, and say publicly, and I have before, that I think this board actually did its job by asking. For those who are asking educational questions about how does this plan work? What is not working about this? What has, has this happened? We did our job because our job is to support the superintendent by bringing forward the questions in the community and or in our. Beliefs and, and understanding of educational working of the system. I think that, um. A vote would have muddled things in my own opinion, and I'm open to everyone else. If this is my individual opinion, it would have muddled things because it has no authority behind it. And, and so I think that we just need to be mindful of what as we, as we do this, what are we solving for right now? We are about to reopen on September 29th. And so in terms of, and John, I do hear you on this, in terms of time well spent. What are we as a board? Going to spend the time for on this vote, when at best it's ambiguous whether we should have or not, whether we should have or not. Mrs. Ritchie and then Mr. Seeny.
Um, so my, I, I think my, my reflection is I was actually the first person to ask why hybrid when hybrid was announced. So the question was asked immediately when we learned of the decision. So, and, and from there on, there was a very robust discussion and many questions asked by many board members. In my view, the authority and it, it is the authority of the, the superintendent to make this decision. I feel a vote is symbolic. We can have a symbolic vote if that's what the board wants. We are entitled to that. But the authority rests with the superintendent. There were ample opportunities and it's easy to amend an agenda and on a motion, it's not difficult. And if people felt strongly, I always encourage people to make motions and amend the agenda for an action item if they feel it's necessary. So I feel there were opportunities and if people felt strongly, they should have done it. At this point in Peter Way, it's, it's symbolic. And at, at the beginning, I was apprehensive about hybrid, but as I've learned more, I, I'm supportive of the plan as it currently stands. And I'd happily be, go for it on Tuesday, if that's the will.
Mr. Seeny.
Yeah, again, I'm not looking back at the last decision. I, I want to provide some, uh, like I said, collaboration with the. Administration and show some of the administrative support around here. And, you know, the K documents do. Outline, yes, it's ultimately a superintendent's decision, but the board may wish to conduct a vote to support that decision.
Yeah, I think it said voice support. You may have something that, that there were so many documents admitted. I think the last one I said voice support for.
And again, when we voice our individual support, that's not voicing our support as a board.
No, although I would say the exclusion of the word vote was purposeful on the calls with both the commissioner that I sat and with Babe. But let's talk to Dr. Adley. Dr. Adley, would. Do you see a vote as, um, a supportive action? Do you, do you feel that your board did not, was not supportive by not issuing a vote? And I, and I understand there's, there's two different decisions, whether the board feels they should. But, and, and whether the superintendent feels it would have been supportive. But if the claim is that a vote would be supportive of the administration, I think the administration. Needs to weigh in if that's the case.
So I don't believe that, that the board advocated any responsibility or governance issues. And I'm, I'm a big on the responsibility of the board is governance issues. But when, when things are administrative responsibility and designated as such. Um, certainly you have rigorous conversations and I, I. The, the vote scenario and the continual discussion about it actually just continues this, this. This cultural feeling right now that, that impacts the organization. If, if, if on these situations, if you decide to go down a, a vote. And the minister of pain, uh, led by me, you know, that's like, right? Ultimately wants to go down a direction. If you go down the process of, on, on these. As you said, are administrative in nature. Uh, to, to have votes on them, well, you're on the risk of it not being helpful. I mean, that's just because the way it is. If you vote down something that we have spent an ordinary amount of time doing, that's not going to look good. And you may say, well then, then there's a problem. Well then. Then you deal with a problem and don't do it. You just.
So the finer point I just put on that for consideration of the board is if it's a board responsibility and we vote down something the administration has put forward, that is our right and our responsibility. If it is an administrative responsibility and we look to either vote for or against. I think that, John, in terms of policy, we also have policy saying the role of the board is to stay out of administrative responsibility. Now this board may decide. That we think the reopening of schools wasn't administrative responsibility. And I do think we had some of that discussion at our retreat. I was one of the people pushing. I really felt differently about it. State Department of Education said, like your argument, not so interested in it. It's the, the job of the superintendent. So. I, that's my only concern. I think there are times where this board can agree or disagree with the administration and should. And, and we've seen cases where that's happened. We've seen proposals put forward where the board of education has voted it down. When it is delineated as a responsibility that is not ours and we put it up for a vote, vote, I think we run the risk of confusing. People where, where our roles intersect where they don't. That's, that's been my concern. I think. I would, I would argue that the board has not abdicated its responsibility as well. I see, Mr. Brown, come right to you. I think that was clear by the commissioner. I think that was clear by cave. I think some boards of education chose. To do things differently. That is not an indictment of them. I just am very proud of the work that Darian Board of Education has done. And acknowledge how messy the reopening of schools during this pandemic. And I've been told it's not a pandemic. It really is. It is not by hate word number. Has done. And I actually think the nine of us should be quite proud of both our administrative team and the work, and the work many of us have done on this. So that's just my individual thoughts. Mr. Brown and then Mr. Burke.
I was going to defer to Mike Phil, who remember Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Dave. And I apologize. Uh, the hour has gotten late. I do need to depart, but I wanted to be heard on this issue. And I said it publicly a couple of weeks ago. I do not believe that the board advocating its responsibilities in any way in hearing about the hybrid plan and offering its comments. At this time, I, I understand and I agree with Mr. Seeny as a tier, as a tool of support. Uh, to the extent that there's been public comment that perhaps, you know, we didn't agree with the hybrid plan. You know, I think that there is a use, uh, for a unified statement or a vote, but I think it was clear that we were not mandated. To vote if we decide to do that in the, in the future, uh, that's another, uh, consideration. But I think we ought to be looking. Forward in this regard and, and not behind. But thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Um. The question about, and Katie brought this up earlier and you touched on a terror in terms of. You know, what the guidance was from the state. It's pretty murky. I mean, let's be honest. They did it quickly. It's kind of hard to follow. I know you were involved in some phone calls. There's some different information, but you know, going through it, I agreed very clearly that it explicitly states the responsibility for drafting the plan. And submitting the plan to the state rests with the superintendent. So they were able to write that out very clearly. I can't find anything in here that's equally clear. It says, who has the responsibility for the decision? So, you know, I, I keep looking for it. I can't find it. If someone can point it to me, I'd really appreciate it.
I can do that.
All right, Mr. Seeny, do you want to point that out for Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I mean, that part is in the back. I think you, yes, uh, August 11th, 2020. But again, there's, you know, there may be implemented some decisions that do require a local board approval, you know, so. Like everything else, it's ambiguous. So.
I would also argue it says superintendent will be responsible for making the decisions on which the free, which of the three plans will be used by school districts. There is no requirement for board approval. We believe that each board should consider whether it is helpful to voice support for the superintendent's. Difficult decision as a way to build community confidence to the plan. I think that line is what Mr. Seeny is talking about. And I think that is where there is some murkiness. I would agree with you. Is this really supported or not? And we, we could debate it, but the question is, do we? Continue this discussion as productive or, or are we ready to move forward?
So that, that brings to the point.
Mr. Brown finished, sorry.
Yeah, no, no problem. Um, so, so that gets me to kind of where we are now. We, you know, whatever this says, how clear it is, how clear it is, and whatever the degree of confusion exists in the documents. I think the decision for the board now is do we take a vote, we put on a motion that we support the opening on the 26th and that. I think it's important, it's, it's the 29th. I think that's important. If we look, you know, to the students, I think it's important to look to the constituencies, uh, the teachers, administrators, parents. We're looking for some clarity and, you know, rightly or wrongly feel that we have not been clear and have not been. As, you know, definitive of what our plans are. And I think it would be send a good signal. And I think it would be, uh, wise of us to put. Out to everyone who's watching, let them know that we're committed to that date. The board is committed to that date and that's the way we would like to move, move forward. And, you know, I think the ambiguity in the past isn't really what the issue. I think it's what we do here. Looking forward to the full opening. What we do moving forward is conditions change.
Yeah. And I, I was just request, we put it on the agenda, the possible, uh, action item and we take the vote that, or somebody makes the motion, somebody. And we take the vote, or somebody makes the motion, somebody seconds it or not, and then we figure out where the cards lie on that. But that would be my suggestion.
Mr. Dene.
As always, a good conversation amongst this group of folks. And I actually like what Deb Ritchie had said in terms of a symbolic type vote. If we feel it supports what we're hearing from the community, if it helps with, I think Dr. Adley's good comments around the culture and what the community is feeling. My, the one thing that pops into my head that I think we need to be cautious of is if we go down the path of doing that symbolic vote and showing a sign of support, which by all our individual conversations around this table, I think we've shown support for how the plan is rolled out. I think we've had discussions around the communication challenges we've had. But we go down that path of next Tuesday having some type of symbolic vote and something happens in terms of cases of COVID or something else comes down from the state, that vote just, you know, becomes hollow if Dr. Adley has to make another decision around the opening of the school and how that proceeds. So I just think we need to continue to weigh all the facts.
So let me just say that I think very, very respectfully, certainly it's not mutually exclusive between a board and a superintendent. That's my responsibility to fill that gap and make sure that people do feel like if it's my decision, I want to make sure the board understands and feels involved in that. And then I understand tacitly what, what I'm hearing back, right? That's my responsibility, right? And if I didn't do that, I would certainly recognize that. And that's a point to move forward. I'm just going to tell you, if you have a vote on Monday, you're putting into question my whole jeopardy, my trust, my integrity with this district. I'm just standing to you, okay? If you don't think that's the case, I'm just telling you again culturally, that's the case. If that's what you want to do, I will say it can't be any clearer. You're, when you are talking about your responsibility, right? The trust you have, it's your trust to, with the community to make a decision. You're also questioning my trust, me, in the sense that I'm missing, I'm misinterpreting documents that are very, very clear. And otherwise, you're putting my decision-making integrity on the table. If you don't realize that, I'm just telling you after the way it works.
Mr. Dene.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. I think that's, I hope the public sees the type of discussion that we're having around the red tape, around the roundtable. And I appreciate you saying that. I think also, let's take a step back. We talk about, over the course of the last couple of months, we talk about diversity. We talk about educating our children. We talk about how they appear and what they do socially and outside of the Darien and community. I think every now and then we need to take a breath. Our schools are open, all right? We have the technology. We have the dollars. We have the administration. We have the teachers. We have great students and we have great parents. There are schools that are not open. There are schools that have no technology. There are schools that have been burnt to the ground out West. There are people that have died during this time of year. And like, let's take a big picture look as to where we are at. Some of the venom and the viciousness, my words, some of the verbal public attacks that we've all experienced through this community are getting to the point of they're unacceptable. All right? And I think it does play into the culture. Someone called me the other day and said to me, I've never seen a district that has so much going for it, that has everything going for it in terms of parents, teachers, money, dollars. I've never seen a group of people that continue to like to tear themselves apart from the inside out. All right? I'm sorry I have to say it. All right? But that's been the challenges and the frustration over the last couple of months. Everyone's comments are important. The feedback from the public, there's nothing like it. And that's how we'll only do better to get there. But let's get back to the basics. It's about our students. We have a plan. We're open and we're moving forward. And let's keep doing that.
Yeah. Mr. Seeny.
Yeah, again, my actions are only to provide support in light of the public criticism that where the administration is getting. So, you know, assuming all the health data is in line, we would certainly vote, I would imagine, we would certainly vote in favor of, you know, the Dr. Adley's plan to move forward. But anyway, that, I just want to make that clear.
Mr. Maron.
I just want to offer up Mrs. Stein to amend or correct her comment. I believe she made a mistake when she said, we only have 12 days before we go full remote. I believe she was saying, we only have 12 days before we fully open, but just want to get that out that it's.
I tried to correct it, but then my mic went off. Sorry, Dennis. Yes. Until we go fully in.
I don't want the public to feel that there are members who believe we're planning behind the stage to go full.
So I will, Mrs. McCannan, and then if everyone feels they've aired their piece on this given time, I will move forward. Mrs. McCannan.
I just wanted to address you directly, Alan, and your concerns about your integrity being on the table. I think the board is trying really hard to make sure that they've done their governance. You have provided documents to us to say that we don't need to vote. Cave newsletter talks about voting in September from the president of Cave. I have another cave document since we need to. I don't think we need to worry about that so much now. But I want to be clear that this is not about Alan Adley's integrity. This, this board and this community is trying to figure this particular issue out. More globally than that, we have struggled with what governance looks like for this community. And we probably will continue to do that for some time. So if you will allow us some space to work through that without feeling that it's about you, that it's about our community and our school system and how we govern it. And going forward, I think that the big pieces of governance are thinking about curriculum and what it means, I think, at least from our board perspective. What do we need to do for policy? What are we doing for finance? And a lot of that is moving forward. And thank you to the folks who are supporting that. And I think that's where we need to focus our time and attention. But this question of governance is a hot button for the district and it's ours.
I'm sorry, I see Mrs. Stein again, and she's been cut off so many times. So Mrs. Stein, if you have your comment, and then we really will. I just feel like she was cut off on the whole first part of conversation. Mrs. Stein.
Sorry, I would just add with, with Alan, I mean, having run two and a half superintendent searches, all of that. I think we hired Dr. Adley because we trusted him to be the leader of this district. And I think, you know, I agree. I think a vote could be a slippery slope and not showing our support of him. I can tell you, I do not want to run another superintendent search anytime soon. I trust you, Dr. Adley. I appreciate the work you've done. I think we've asked hard questions and also shown our support. If we were to have done a vote, I think it should have been done way at the beginning when we decided on a plan. At this point, we're halfway through. I just, I really am against it at this point. I have the utmost faith in you and the administration.
So I'll just close it out saying I think our superintendent is saying his integrity is on the line for a decision that he is entitled and empowered to make. Darien may have governance issues, but it might be shown by the fact that we've had six superintendent in 12 years. So maybe the governance issues are slightly different than are being described. With that, I am, yes, sorry.
Because I just want to conclude, if I may, I recognize the governance issues, gentlemen. Very much appreciate those and I respect them. Actually, I want to make sure that in talking about my own integrity, I really mean, it's not really about me. I'll say that. I really mean, in doing that, I don't think it's the most helpful decision for the district. That's, that's what gets my opinion. I don't believe it's the helpful decision for the district, that's all. But I certainly appreciate, and I would, your comments, recognizing.
With that, I am going to entertain a motion to, Ms. McCannan, please. Time is short.
Agenda item. Marge, is there a plan to look at our, or Alan, to look at our absence policy, particularly before we send students in full, in full time? I'm specifically concerned about if we need to quarantine, how we're counting those against our absence because it's very specific. And I didn't know if we were planning to look at that policy before we go full time.
So I don't know that we have a board policy that addresses that. The ship, Shipman and Goodwin said that in light of the guidance that we just received from the state, they would update the policy, but since it came in now, so we have procedures, but not ready for a policy quite yet.
Okay, yes, the state has issued guidance in the COVID period. Mr. Brown.
So I just had a quick comment addressing policies. I know there was an issue raised earlier about football season, alternate season. I would like to comment that I'm in full support and would like to see the board take action on that as necessary, as quickly as possible, given the time issue. So maybe that's Tuesday, maybe that's Tuesday, if I can't, you know, and then it's scheduled now. But I just would like to put that as an agenda item for Tuesday.
So we've taken notes from public comment. As a point of order, there's not a policy surrounding that. So we're going to have to leave that to bed on this special meeting, but I hear you. With that, I would like to entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of negotiations pursuant to Connecticut State Statute 206B. Mr. Seeny so moves. Mr. Dene seconds. All in favor. That is unanimous from those in attendance. Thank you, everybody.